All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, January 4th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Introduction to Board Members. All the way to my left is Paul Ametucci, Jerry Graybill, Don Ganarelli, myself, Michael LaRue, Phil Roy, Les Bodwell, and Rick Rains. The first thing we're going to work with today is the Planning Board Position Appointments for Secretary, Chairman, and Vice Chairman for the 2024 year. Is there any recommendations?
Nominate Mike for Chair.
I will second that.
Okay, further discussion? I guess I'll do it again.
We thought you should.
Yeah, great, thank you guys.
I recommend Phil as Vice Chairman.
Hold on, we got a vote. Yes, we got a motion in a second. And now, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now.
Now.
I recommend Phil as Vice Chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion?
Wait a minute, Don and who, Don and Paul?
Yeah.
I got it.
Suppose we should ask Phil if he is willing to accept it?
I am willing to accept that nomination.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Secretary. So, Secretary role is basically if the Chair and the Vice Chair isn't here in a meeting, they take over and they host the meeting.
I will nominate Mr. Paul Ametucci because he did a fantastic job in both of our absences in the past.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion?
Yes.
So, what are, what are the duties of the Secretary?
It's basically the backup to the backup to host the meeting.
Case these two aren't, aren't here, you host.
And get us caught.
And you did a great job last time, that's why you got nominated.
Because you were whispering in my ear.
Well, I can whisper in your ear.
All right, well. All right.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Now we have our appointments for the Planning Board.
Man, I'm bushy. Yeah, you did.
All right, so next is a public hearing for Burwick Community Garden, conditional use, 20 Public Safety Way, U-004, Lot 142/Zone VO. So if you could just come up and just give us a brief description and then we'll let members of the public speak.
I'm Rita Cutrell, 8A Goodwin Street. Congratulations. So just give you a quick background. About a year ago, Dennis and I started teaching classes at the library on gardening. So that was sort of our foray into living here and being part of the community and being noticed for our abilities to do gardening. So in the spring through Invision Burwick, it came up that there was an interest in doing a community garden. So in April, I sent out a community questionnaire survey through social media and we got really good response. So after that response, it seemed like it would be a good thing to pursue. So we started site search and I also started going around to other community gardens in the vicinity. I think I've visited 12 altogether. In July, we met before the, or was it June? I think, was it June that we met before the Select Board? I think it was. And they approved the site. In July, we started doing public meetings, inviting people who were interested and curious about the garden to come to monthly meetings. We learned a lot from people about what they were looking for and we took really good notes and that's when we started with our actual planning part of it. In late July, I went to visit Seattle and I visited 12 gardens while I was there. So I've seen a lot of different gardens, all different styles, from little tiny neighborhood pocket gardens up to multi-acre gardens. And taken all of that information in and it's really helped to inform how we design the garden. So we've continued with designing the garden and we think that we've come up with a really great design that will meet the needs of the community, a lot of different kinds of needs for the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anyone's free to state their comments, questions, concerns?
Okay, hi, I'm Maureen Nikitas, Heritage Drive in Burwick. And I'm speaking on behalf of Amrita and her project. I did a little volunteer work at the library garden under her and she did a great, successful job there. She's obviously done a lot of research and has a lot of knowledge, so I just want to say yes, that's my vote as a member of the community.
Okay, thank you.
Tom Wright, Cemetery Road. I was at your meeting, no, last year and gave a little bit of a history of that piece of property. I'm going to run through that again for people that are just tuning in now. The site is over at what was the former elementary school, the Estabrook Elementary School. The school was built in 1948 and in the late 60s, the addition where the police station is now, the door ring part of that was built. After the Huzzy School was built, the district continued using that for kindergarten space and head start and things like that, but eventually they gave it up and Burwick reacquired it. Shortly after that, that's when the police station moved in over there. This used to be the police station here at the time. There was a status quo for a few years. About 12 years ago, 13 years ago, I guess it was, when the Downtown Vision Committee was formed, the precursor to the Invision Burwick Committee. One of the first things they did as a group was start identifying parcels in town that could be used to promote the community. And that parcel was noticed right away, obviously as a big open space near the center of town. We briefly had a contract with an outfit out of Portsmouth, New Hampshire to build assisted living there. They had plans for building with 24 apartments there, I think it was 24. But they didn't get their funding at the time, so they couldn't proceed with it, so it was back on the shelf. And a lot of different things were proposed there. And then when Burwick started looking at replacing the fire station and we're looking at different sites, the fire department did a study about where the growth in Burwick was and where the call, number of calls were. And that study actually showed that a new fire station would be best out on Pine Hill Road. We investigated several different parcels out there. None of them were really ideal. And that's when the public in Burwick started asking why we weren't building at the Estabrook School. We did a bunch of research. It came down to a town vote and the town voted to put the fire station there rather than on Pine Hill. During that whole discussion, there was, you know, talk about what to do with the parcels of land there that were not being used by the police station or the fire department. And a lot of different proposals were put forward, including a skateboard park, a dog park, a music venue, things like that. And at the time, I argued that we needed to really look and see what happened at that site before we decided what would go there. There's always been the intention of the town, it seems like that something was going to happen there. And when Amrita talked to me about possible places to place a community garden, it seemed like that would be a much less intrusive use of that than a dog park or a music venue or anything like that. So I thought that was a good place for it. I've worked a lot with Dennis and Amrita over the last six months towards, you know, getting this all set up. It's come together nicely, I think. We've been, you know, negotiating with the police department and the fire department about, you know, how it's going to impact them. We seem to have come to an agreement about what we need to do to alleviate any future Part of, part of the, the project is going to be extending the walking paths in Burwick and we're going to be using some of the tax increment financing money that we can use for promoting the greenways and things like that in Burwick. And we're going to be using some of that money to probably use that to build the bridge over the drainage gully there and to promote the pathway up towards Logan Street. So that's a brief history of what was there, what went there and what has been proposed there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, Nick.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeremy Caston on Blackberry Hill Road. I just want to say that, keep this very brief. From an Invision Burwick standpoint, a community garden checks off two huge and critical things, and that is community and gardening. Those are wholesome and important and I think the very fabric of Burwick. And I'm proud to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We did have one letter sent in that we should read to the board. Says, "Dear members of the Planning Board, I trust this letter finds you all well. I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed community garden at the fire and police stations, a matter that has warranted careful consideration from all of you. While I appreciate the intent behind the community garden project, I believe it is crucial to consider the several potential issues that may arise due to its proximity to a fire and police stations, bearing in mind that I think there have been some changes since the person who wrote this letter was aware of this. My concerns center around the following key points. Security and safety. The nature of the emergency services provided by a fire and police station demands heightened security measures. How will the proposed community garden impact the station's security protocols considering the potential for increased foot traffic in the vicinity? Emergency services access. It is imperative to ensure unimpeded access to the fire and police station at all times. Will the community garden design accommodate the need for quick and unrestricted entry and exit of emergency services vehicles? Noise and disturbances. Emergency services require a quiet and focused environment. How can we be certain that the community garden activities, events, or gatherings will not disrupt the essential work carried out by our first responders? Collaboration with emergency services. Has there been discussion with the fire and police department to gauge their perspective on the proposed community garden? What measures are in place to address potential liability issues associated with the community garden? I'm assuming all of these concerns have been examined and that any conditions will be made before approving the project. While community gardens are undoubtedly valuable assets, the unique operational needs of our fire and police stations would require a meticulous balance to ensure that the community garden complements rather than compromises the vital services provided by our emergency personnel. I respectfully request that these concerns be carefully taken into account. I appreciate your dedication. Sincerely, Lisa Chase, Burwick Select Board."
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, we can discuss that.
You sure?
Yeah. Nope. All right, I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right. Moving along is the first public comment. It's open to any non-agenda items. Okay. Moving along. We have no minutes to approve yet? Not yet, okay. Then all business, Burwick Community Garden, conditional use, 20 Public Safety Way, U-004, Lot 142, Zone VO.
All right. So, the letter that expressed concerns, we've talked with the town.
You got to speak into the mic.
Oh, excuse me.
Just so the people at home can hear.
Right, right, forget about that.
Here's a copy so you can address them immediately.
Okay. Yeah, so Dennis Jackson, Goodwin Street, Burwick. Okay. We've talked with Chief Town and we've located the position for a stockade fence between the police activities and the garden. And that will keep anybody from wandering off the garden site and become in the way of the police department. And also keep anybody from walking from near the apartments towards the garden. So I think that issue's been, been taken care of. And then Chief Plant has asked that a chain link fence be placed around the propane tank and that will be done. And as you may have seen on the walk, there is a large rock swale between the garden and the fire department, and there will be a fence around the garden. So we don't feel that there's likely chance anybody will wander out of the garden and into the space around the fire station. And we've designed the entrance from the parking area in front of the police and fire stations to guide people into the garden space without them walking out into the fire station apron with the equipment. So I think safety concerns have been addressed by our design and our communication with the chiefs.
Could I, could I ask just for one little piece of clarification in what you just said about the swale that's located between the garden and the fire station? You said, when mentioning the swale, that there would be a fence around the garden. Did you mean that there would be a fence around the swale?
No.
Only around the garden?
Around the garden.
Okay.
You know, all, all four sides of the garden will have a fence around it.
So once you cross the gate to get into the garden, you're in the garden?
You're in the garden.
Okay.
So where is this stockade fence going to be? So I didn't hear it had at the, at the site.
I'm sorry, with the wind, it was pretty hard to communicate. You got a map today?
Yes.
And that map shows the location of the stockade fence. This one doesn't have it.
You see it, Paul?
It's parallel to the police station.
Stockade on the other side of the police station.
I'm thinking he's got a map that doesn't have it somewhere.
It's on this, it's on this one, Paul.
Yeah, it's on this.
Okay.
So the stockade fence will run along here.
Okay.
And all the way over to this fence.
Perfect, that's great, yeah.
Thank you.
So just curious, if I may, Mr. Chair. I know in Chief Town's original letter, looking at his third paragraph, he raised some concerns about the walkway between the buildings and the access. Would you, and we have to support our, our law enforcement folks and our public servants who provide a valuable service to our town and volunteer their time and serve in harm's way. So that, I take that to heart, those words. Would you guys be at all agreeable to the possibility for, for two reasons? One, that proposed walkway goes right by a memorial to our fallen firefighters. It goes right by a memorial to a fallen law enforcement agent that was here in Burwick. And it's a high-traffic area, it will be a high-traffic area through the proposed foot traffic. Would you be agreeable to possibly just having the access from the other end and not using that footpath? Would that be a reasonable compromise?
So, if I may, is that walkway has always been proposed for the public walkway. If you look at the original plans, is on the drafting of the plans, it shows that that being used as a public access to that property. And as far as going past the two memorials, I can't think of a better fitting, more fitting way of people to realize that those memorials are there because most people don't realize those memorials there. So if people are walking by, they're more likely to see them and recognize that there's been a past sacrifice made.
Tom, before you walk away, if I, if I may, I think, you know, you hit exactly what I was thinking when you said that, that, you know, here's two memorials to, to brave people that gave their lives in service of the public. And what a better way to memorialize them than people see them. I actually stopped and looked at those memorials when I walked by today to go to that garden. And, you know, I think one of the other things that, I may be wrong, but I think that, you know, this is public property. So, you know, the public is, you know, if I decided to take my kids out in that field right now and have a picnic, I don't think anyone could stop me. It's public property. So I think it's important to note that as well. I mean, we want to definitely respect the police and the fire department and the operation of their business. But I think, you know, knowing that that is, was actually always designed to be a public walkway and it goes by those two memorials, I think makes that even more, makes that make even more sense.
And if I may, you know, talking about the, the public walkway and stuff, that's all been part of our comprehensive plan and our downtown vision is to make connecting walkways between all the different parcels that Burwick owns. The pieces down by the river, the pieces up by the library. And actually, is later on this year, I'm going to be looking at proposing another walkway on the other side of that property coming off of Sullivan Street, looping around the wooded area of the Logan Street, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I'm just, I have one question.
Okay.
I know anything over a six-foot fence is a grudge fence, according to. Is this fence going to be enough security for the police department and the fire department? Is it going to be okay? I mean.
If I, if I may.
Please.
Say two things. First of all, not all fences over six feet are considered a grudge fence, depends on the circumstance.
Circumstances.
But anything over six feet requires a permit because of engineering. So they could potentially do whatever height the community garden and the police department agrees upon. Just would matter as to whether or not I need the fencing company to give me engineering materials. Secondly, Mr. Chair, and I apologize if I'm out of line, but perhaps, you know, Mr., the chief might want to, Mr. Chair, you might want to have the chief address some of these issues directly since he's here.
Yeah.
Just so, to ease the board members' concerns, because I know there's a meeting.
Yep.
You're not getting out of it, chief, sorry. Because there is, there is one item in the letter from, from Select Board Member Chase that was not something that was easily addressable and I think would be good on the record from the chief as far as the noise and disturbances and whether or not the police department, I know I've spoken with the fire department about it, but whether or not the police department feels there is any concern for noise from a garden that would be disruptive to your business.
From noise coming from the garden towards us?
Yeah.
I don't have any issues with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
They might be a little irritated with, we test our sirens when we do shift changes and things like that, so that's something that you'll have to be accustomed to. Of course, we use them when we come and go. That should answer that question.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that all of your concerns were addressed.
I will speak really quickly on the walkway issue. I understand what Mr. Wright said, that is, has been defined as a walkway, but I think it should be upgraded to meet what is now going to be asked of it. You're going to have people going back and forth between our two buildings and you guys walk that today, it really isn't properly designed at this point.
It is quite narrow.
For rakes and shovels and wheelbarrows and things of that nature. My other concern, again, of that, that particular location where that walkway is, is just because of, if you look at the way the, my building's laid out, my cruisers feed out of that front door. So they're coming out of that front door into an area where we'll probably have increased foot traffic because of the community garden. So my concerns are safety-wise, safety-minded in that respect. So again, the walkway issue, if it's going to be a walkway and it's going to be used, it probably should be, in my mind, upgraded to meet the use that's going to be required of it.
And if I may, I didn't, I didn't really pay particular attention to the, to that walkway. Is it too narrow? Is that your concern?
Well, it actually is, the walkway, one could almost call it like a, an apron on the fire department. It goes up against the edge of the fire department and it comes out not a big distance.
Three feet, maybe?
So it's not, it's not like an ADA five-foot?
No.
I think it would have to be upgraded anyways because if, if the garden's going to be an ADA compliant, needs to have at least a five-foot walkway.
Yeah.
So, and so then I would ask the question about concern for safety and people using that. I mean, I don't personally envision this being a massively trafficked walkway. I, I don't know, I could be wrong, could be, you know, a whole community of gardeners here that, you know, you, all of a sudden, parking in that parking lot. But, I mean, you know, if your offices are coming out, getting into cruisers, is that what you're saying? They park out front and they begin coming in?
There's a drive-through garage right there.
Right. The garage, the garage door.
Like a Sally Port.
Is, is very close. It goes really between the two monuments that we refer to. Our cruisers feed out of that front door. We go around the back and we come out the front, kind of like the Bat Cave, if you, if you remember that. So I'm just saying that, that, that traffic there is probably one of the more, safety-wise, one of the more sensitive areas. And, and you're asking people to do something on a walkway that isn't, at this time, really set up for what it's being asked of. So I'm just looking at, if we're going to have it there, let's make sure that the thing works as far as. So as the walkway, like, once it reaches, the, the walkway is a normal walkway up until the fire station. Yes. Once you get to the front door, like you said, it's just like it skirts around. Yes. And then it's just, it's paved, right? That's what it is. It's just a paved. Yes. Walkway. I think what they were saying is they're, they're not going to really access it for wheelbarrow use and stuff like that. They're going to be using the top part to get all that stuff in. So they're not going to be, it's more or less just going to be pedestrians walking through that area. All the stuff would be inside of the fenced area. But I do hear the concern about finishing, like widening out that area for better access.
So, so you're saying, because I wasn't aware of this, so, so there's going to be an entrance on Logan Street?
Yes. Yep. If you look at the top.
For, for construction and heavier equipment?
Yeah, for drop-off, for equipment or compost, for chips.
It's not shown on either.
Yeah.
You need to see the Hammerhead.
I didn't see it and I didn't hear it.
So at the Hammerhead area, they said there's a rolling gate and that's where all their, basically all their drop-offs will be. And that's also where most of the, like, the, the people picking up produce would be coming up from the top and not from the bottom.
Got it. All right. So that makes.
And if, if that is the case, would it be a reasonable ask? And I just, again, in the interest of supporting our public servants, they've brought up the point that, you know, officer safety and traffic and policing issues, I, I am fully in support of the community garden, but from an officer safety standpoint, does it make sense to not have access via? Does it make sense to not have access via a walkway there for officer safety and have it all come in from the other end where the parking's at? If that is where, if that's where your vehicle traffic is coming in and all of your supplies are coming in, why do you?
Drive safe and be aware of people walking. I mean, that's an everyday occurrence everywhere around here. I mean, I don't think that's a.
But you have emergency vehicles coming out to where you have pedestrians.
Sirens and see lights, they pay attention to those.
So, so I would, it, it sort of is a compromise between what I'm hearing. If the walkway is improved and becomes wide, because people have double strollers, they may not have wheelbarrows, but they have strollers and things that they might come through there. The stockade fence that runs parallel to behind the police station, could that be extended to the new wide walkway? Turn 90 degrees back towards your garage door and create a walled-off area to keep people from your area?
So ideally, yes, I would like to see that. That was left out intentionally at this point, only because we have to think of snow removal as well.
Sure.
It's a tight area, and if you look, we're very close to the, what I would call a, a natural cistern for water. Collection, there's not a lot of space there. And I need to be able to have that plowed. So if I enclose it completely at this point, I lose a little bit of the ability to push some snow in that direction.
Okay.
And until, that's why it was, it was intentionally left open with the intent that after a season or two, or winter season or two. If I can make that work, I would prefer to have it completely closed off, yes.
See, could, just for clarity, sorry, not, just for clarity, can you show me on the, on there where the police traffic goes and where that Sally Port is? I think I know, but I'd just like you to highlight it.
Yeah, you see the road and how it turns 90, right there. So I mean, no one should be walking behind around that area. They should be going right.
That's what I thought. I just, I was confused when we were talking about the sidewalk.
It's more or less coming out of the Sally Port. So they'd be going in through that. That's not the concern. The concern is them coming out. But I mean.
But when you're walking from the parking lot, in order to access that walkway, you have to walk right in front of that garage door where you have emergency vehicles coming out?
Well, when I got there, I didn't walk around that.
You didn't?
No.
I could be mistaken.
I walked right on the sidewalk and there was no.
And that, that is the point that I was trying to get to is, do you have to cross that in front of that walk, that garage to get there? And we didn't, so.
No.
No.
Okay.
But I think, I think it got on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I came from the parking lot over, across the street. So I walked around and even Paul and I walked on the way back and we didn't go anywhere near the Sally Port. Now, parking in that parking lot, which they will have six spots, it is possible to have someone walk through there. But I mean, at the same time, I mean, how many?
Being a public place, people have the right to do that, right now. They can park there and walk in front of the bay and, like you said, an emergency, a door goes up, a cop car comes out. Generally, you're gonna get out of the way. I understand the concern completely, but I, I like, I like the idea of separating that spot between the walkway and the back garage door some. I understand your snow removal concern. I don't know if there's some kind of compromise as to a delineation to keep people from just kinda heading down that way.
Right.
But maybe we can figure that out.
I don't think the entrance to the garage is the concern, right? It's, you guys come out of there, you know, on an emergency call, say. Is that more the concern, coming out of the garage?
His concern is valid because essentially in approach to the garden, if they're using the walkway that we're referring to now, they still have the ability to walk. Towards where my cruisers are going into that garage. So they'll be walking into, basically onto our driveway.
Yeah, I saw the need to separate it when I was there.
Yeah. And I agree with you. It's just a matter of that snow removal aspect that I can't predict at this point.
But as of right now, could someone walk around that area? Yes.
Yes, they can, but there isn't a community garden there at this point.
Right, I, I know, but, I mean.
So, so just being kinda devil's advocate, I've seen some videos where, uh, people go on police lots with cameras. And some police react one way, some police react another way. One of the, one of the things that I kinda picked up on, having watched a few of them, is that the, that area needs to be posted.
Yes.
That it's a restricted area? Is that posted as a restricted area?
It is on the.
Is that something we can do to?
So.
Maybe some signs there? And then you still have the ability to push the snow, but there's clear signs? Cause I'm guessing people that are at the community garden aren't gonna be, you know, mischievous and going in your parking lot if they know they'll go there.
Well, we wouldn't be putting the signs up for those people. We'd be putting them up for the ones that need to read the signs.
Have nefarious intent.
Yeah.
There you go. I, I, I'm just looking for, you know, compromise that meets everybody's thing. I think, I think, to me, some signage or.
Ideally, keeping people out of an area that you have a concern with prior to them getting there is the ideal solution. So yes, the signage, if you look around the other side of the building, it's marked. And to be quite honest with you, the reason for the stockade fence is because during the preparation for the community garden, which I, I'm not opposed to the community garden. But we had foot traffic back and forth, going past four signs saying limited access, no access. And just, I deal with human beings all the time. Human nature is if I can see that I only need to go right there, and I can go from point A to point B. And you're telling me I need to go to point A, point B, point C, point D.
And having that stockade fence would definitely.
Which is where we, we came to an agreement, and, and that would resolve that. And the, the one issue that you're referring is, is that one open hole that is still there. And again, I, I brought the concern to the town manager, and I'm not sure if he talked with Highway yet or not. But it was purely stopped at that point based on the snow removal issue. Yeah.
And you have no problem at it being six feet high?
Fence.
The fence, yeah.
Six feet is adequate.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Would you like it higher?
It would probably help, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, the back section. Right.
How high would you like it?
If, if you gotta speak, you gotta speak in front of the microphone. It's just so the people that are listening.
We, we have, we have certain restrictions when it comes to juveniles. We'll keep, we're supposed to keep juveniles from sight and sound from adults, all adults. So if I have a juvenile in custody, which we do on occasion, um, we're supposed to keep these people protected. So what we've got now is we're bringing more activity into a place that didn't have any until this came along. So now the issue arises is what are we going to do when we have these juveniles? We're going to be essentially, in some respects, kind of parading them along in front of the community garden.
So what is the?
That was the other reason for the stockade fence, is to give the privacy between the two spaces.
What does right look like for you guys? Eight foot, 10 foot? What, what works?
I mean, eight foot would be optimal, um, but again, I, I wanna be, I wanna make it clear that I'm not here to oppose the community garden. I've been asked to tell.
Just your concerns and we're, we're voicing them out. So with the elevation, like, I've noticed, like, when I was walking out there at the sidewalk, I've noticed. Halfway through a six-foot fence, you won't see anything. If you're halfway in the garden, you're not gonna see anything. If you're all the way at the top, you could possibly see people.
You could. I agree with you.
Eight foot, is an extra two feet gonna make a difference?
Well, I think that it would in the sense that to go all the way to the top, not only do you have the two extra feet, but now you're hundreds of yards from. The sightline of being able to identify a juvenile versus an adult.
I wouldn't say hundreds of yards, but hundreds of feet.
Feet.
Yeah, okay. Hundreds of yards wouldn't be an issue.
We can, we can survive with six feet? Again, this is all new to us. We're, we're trying to picture what it's going to look like when it's finished.
What's the proposed height right now of the stockade?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yep.
So you're saying in the back of the building, eight feet would be better?
And then around, like, the rest of it that goes around where your, your parking lot? So you're saying the first hundred and one feet, you'd want eight feet tall, and then the rest could be six feet around it?
I would say if we're gonna go with eight feet, let's go with eight feet.
All the way around?
Yep. Just for appearance, I think it's gonna look.
Yeah.
I guess my personal opinion is that if that's a request from our police department and it's a doable thing. I'm in favor of eight feet for the entire fence.
On your cop cars, do you have tinted windows?
Yeah, we do.
So, so my understanding of privacy, to keep things private, that's one of the reasons why you have tinted windows.
To some extent, yes.
And then you'd be bringing them in a Sally, into the Sally Port? For the most part.
Not always with juveniles.
Okay. Would you be going through the front of the police station?
We use the side entrance closest to school street.
The side entrance. So you're, you're talking, so.
I'm talking this end of the building, down here. This is actually the garage.
Yeah.
I'm talking about this.
Right, okay. So the chances of seeing something from this side, from being over here. I mean, with this corner, it'd be very hard to see it.
Again, I'm, I'm being asked to predict. Things that I really can't, you're right. I mean, if people really want to see, if they really, really wanna see, they're gonna stand on a bucket and look over the fence.
Right, and they have their right to do that.
Doing what we can to make, um, I can look people in the eye and say that we did what we could.
Right, right. It's, my thought is just being a, a free man or a free woman. You have, we have the right to go onto a public property as long as it's not restricted access.
Right.
So at that point, anyone could walk around those areas and watch kids being brought into the police station if they're in the, in the parking lot. I mean, so to change something just because. A garden's going in there when anyone has that access at any point, like, if I wanted to walk around the fire station, I could walk around the fire station. I mean, we all have that right to do that. I just, me personally, I think that that would be a little bit of a tall stretch. But that's just me. I mean, if.
Well, the issue is, is we've changed use. You're now inviting people to the space, you're creating a space.
Isn't on the people. The privacy would be more towards the police, creating more privacy for that.
It's an officer, it's an officer safety issue.
For what we, for what we do for business, sometimes privacy is very, very important.
Right, but that's.
People do not like to talk to us when everyone else can see them.
And that also being a double-edged sword, that bringing more people to the fire, fire and police station would be welcoming people to visit, right?
I like visitors, but you, some of the people that we, we need to talk to are not comfortable being seen talking to the police. They do not want that to happen. I can also tell you that by nature, a lot of them smoke.
Yeah.
So I find myself outside of the building, which now we really have had no issue with because there's been no traffic out there. Occasionally, we'd see a person walk by.
Right.
We've now changed, we're changing the use, so you're having something there that's soliciting people to come use it, which is a good thing.
Yes.
I'm trying to say, in order for me to continue to do business safely and to keep all those things in mind, that's where this fence comes up. How am I gonna prohibit people from walking through places that they really can't be?
Right.
And how am I gonna protect the people that I need to protect? And a fence came as the easiest solution.
I agree with that fence. The stockade fence is good.
Yeah, I think, Mike, if I can add to, you know, this is, this is a situation where both components here are, are our community. Right? So it's not like, you know, you have a, a neighbor who's being difficult and wants to, I mean, you know, this is our law enforcement, right? This is, you know, the people we call when we need help, right? So, and, and I think being a community garden, I think that, you know, whatever. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm always kinda yielding to, you know, within reason. I mean, if they want an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot fence, if that makes them feel more comfortable, I don't think that's a huge.
It's a reasonable compromise.
It's gonna be funded out of the same tax dollars that we would have funded the six-foot fence. So personally, I think that kinda, we can almost get into a, you know, like, oppositional, uh, stance here, but I don't think that's really what we want, right? We wanna be, we're all part of the community here.
The fence issue came up late in the game. The way this unfolded, from my perspective, wasn't ideal. And I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying it wasn't ideal. So discussions that we should have had months ago have just taken place. So when we talked the other day, six-foot fence comes up because I'm looking at a section of six-foot fence that we currently have. But when you walk the property and you're standing up there and you realize, I'm, I'm six feet tall, I can see everything regardless of a six-foot fence, I can still see everything. You may have had the proposal come to you with an eight-foot fence on it. We wouldn't be having this discussion. It just came down to timing. So the difference between you're seeing a six identified there and us saying eight tonight is really because this fence thing is new, correct?
Yeah, that was a compromise that you guys have made.
Yes, yes.
I, I, I think that we'll likely see a motion to, I'm going to be making a motion to ask for the fence to be raised to eight feet. I would also ask this question, not necessarily first, but in addition to. Has there been an answer from the people who plow that corner? What is acceptable in terms of where the fence starts and stops and getting the snow removal taken care of?
Yeah, I think there's definitely.
That's just Public Works, right?
James Belismo, TAN manager. I talked with Jody, Director of Public Works. Obviously, if there's a major snow event, it's gonna add additional, you know, inconvenience that it might have to get snowblowed out. But overall, with the, there's built-in snow storage on the plan, so that they can, they can make it work. But we didn't get in, as proposed, we didn't get into detail with it, taking it at 90.
I, I think that needs attention. I think that that, well, does the snow just get pushed into that swale right there?
So, built into both the, if you look at the plan, there's, there's space built in for snow storage. So along the asphalt area, there's a 20-foot, um, gap between where the stockade fence is and the asphalt. So I think.
That should be adequate.
You know, normal circumstances, they'll be able to, to manage it. And then anything else, they'll just have to, you know, like I said, snowblower.
And also, would, would we consider a vegetative barrier along the walkway? You know, like. It, it screens that area and it provides, you know, thou shall walk this way and keeps people from meandering off that path. I, I don't know if that's something.
I think any, I'm not sure about, like, the exacts, but I think any visual cues and barriers, and I think over time signage will be implemented just to make it work, so.
I don't, I don't know if this is a feasible thing or not, but I just kind of had an idea about either having a gate on that fence. Or a removable section of fence, so that in the wintertime, this section of fence can be taken away. When the garden's not being used and, and then you still got a straight shot pushing the, pushing the snow.
Well, yeah, cause then there's still that buffer in between the stockade fence and the food forest. Yeah, I mean, that could be possible.
Doesn't seem like it'd be that hard.
We could do like a series of bollards that are chained and that are removable.
So most of the time, when it comes to compromising on this stuff, it's not like we, we can recommend to the developers. We would ask them, would they be willing to accept that they would wanna put a six-foot fence? It's not like we say you have to have an eight-foot fence or a six-foot fence. It's, are you amenable to putting in an eight-foot fence?
Or you can make it a condition of approval, can you not?
Uh, that, I guess that would be a Hannah question.
I mean, we do conditions of approval all the time.
Well, you said we have to have a permit, excuse me, to make it higher than six foot, correct?
Something, yes. So the, anything over six feet tall by state code requirements requires, uh, engineering. So I would, they would have to have a permit. And just so you guys are aware, I realize that yes, it's all gonna come out of the same funds. But I don't know if any of you all have seen the price of fencing lately, and that two feet really makes a huge financial impact, so. You know, just, just so you're aware, as we're thinking about this, because it is all our, all of the, all of the parties involved. This is a very unique and pleasantly unique situation because literally every party involved on all sides of this are all ours. And everybody, we wanna make every single person happy for different reasons, but all related to the community, so.
I mean, we, I think we could work together to figure out whether it's six feet or eight feet. That when we're, we can consult with a fence, fence company and really take a look at it to come up with a plan that works. And I think in some areas, the topography's different. The one fence goes up a hill, but ultimately, we want the fence to, to work. But I don't, I mean, whether, I don't think we need to get hung up on whether it needs to be six feet or eight feet. to be six feet or eight feet. Ultimately, we can make it, make it work.
Yeah, or like what, so Jerry just said, what if we basically lifted up a six-foot fence two feet, so it'd be open on, on the bottom, and then it would just have that... It's, it is, but it would be open at the bottom, so then for snow removal and stuff like that...
It would still...
I don't know if that changes the engineering need.
No. It's not gonna change anything.
And two, I, you know, I was just thinking about the whole thing about the fence and about having a gate or a removable thing, because, you know, every place I've ever seen that has a fence around it gets damaged or destroyed every winter.
Yep.
So, you know, getting rid of that snow is an important, important factor to consider with that.
Well, there's also enough room, so it's 20 feet in between the road and the fence, and then it looks like there's probably roughly almost 20 feet in between the fence and the, the other fence for the garden. So I mean, what's to say that they just try and move it another five or 10 feet? Because the closer the fence, stockade fence is, only, the only thing is, at some point, the, the bottom part of the food forest might be shaded. I mean, that would, that would also be a concern, I guess.
I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, talk about the, the fence and the snow removal. There's talking about the, the area on the backside of the police driveway where it turns the corner, and, you know, talking whether to put a fence there or a removable fence there. At that point, the fence was more to corral people from going across there. Is, you know, as James pointed out earlier, we can do a lot of that pedestrian traffic control with bollards and chains and not a solid fence. So there is no need for a fence on that end, you know, anyways, so. Is, you know, so that way, that would eliminate that. The only other thing I was gonna say is about the, you know, the fence, is going from the six-foot fence to the eight-foot fence does add quite a bit of cost to it, not only in the fencing cost, but in the engineering cost. And is, as you just mentioned, that it may be moving that fence up the hill closer to the community garden would effectively raise the height, know, that extra two feet, so that we wouldn't need that eight-foot fence through there.
Right.
So.
Plus giving you more room for snow storage.
Yeah. So Hannah, what's your thought on conditioning fence height?
Well, I would say technically you can put a specific height, although I would caution that partially just because there's been a lot of discussion on it, but also because it is still a relatively new decision. And kind of as James was saying, I think the best way forward is to leave the condition as, you know, fencing as amenable to, you know, all parties involved, something like that, so that there's a clear need for, what's the word? A decision between everyone, rather than specifically specifying the height.
So, so if we just said adequate fencing is provided in the areas shown?
That's satisfactory to the police department and the applicant or the garden.
Okay. Okay.
Doesn't that still leave a decision to be made?
Yeah, but not by us, okay?
And that, and that is something that...
I don't wanna leave it ambiguous either. That's, you know, let's not leave it too open-ended.
Well, I mean, it's either a six or an eight-foot fence. It has to be there regardless.
Well, I would, I would offer this as a compromise. If we're, if we're stuck on it...
I mean, if it's all taxpayer money, I mean, it, maybe it should go to a vote?
Right.
I mean, why are we the ones that say...
And that thing's gonna be delayed two years, so. But I think, I think the reality, that this is a very simple solution, is let's get an eight-foot stake and a six-foot stake. Let's go drive them in the ground at the proposed level we're talking about if we're gonna go up that hill, and let's get a visual look at it. And if, if a six-foot fence moved a few feet back, a few feet up the hill, is gonna provide adequate, adequate screening and the police are in agreement, then, then we move forward. And if it doesn't, then, then we condition it for an eight-foot fence and we can put it to bed.
I don't know. It, it's 160-something feet long. At two feet tall, I mean, that's, that's a significant, significant cost of, of infrastructure for that, so.
Chief, could I ask you a question, please?
Hold on.
My question would be, how important is an eight-foot fence after the conversation that we've had, knowing that, you know, it's a significant additional cost to the taxpayers? How important really is it to have an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot fence?
Willing to work with anybody. This used to be the police department, so if you think of what we're willing to work with, we talked about a six-foot fence because of where Dennis and I were looking at the way the grade came down. We had put the fence at the bottom of the grade. I guess if you move it up two feet, it's going to theoretically raise the height of the fence. So, I mean, a six-foot fence might be adequate, it's just the positioning of it.
Two feet to the hill.
If you say that I only have a six-foot fence, then I only have a six-foot fence. You're not gonna see me...
Well, you know, I'm asking because I want, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, I wanna do what you guys need without, you know, killing the project or without, you know, really, you know, breaking the budget. Can, can, would you be okay if we made a motion like we would approve the six-foot fence and location to be determined? Would that be more, you know, then you guys could adjust it or we could do the stake thing?
That's your decision, I guess.
Well, I'm just trying to get your, your take on it, you know.
I mean, looking at what you just said, that leaves speculation as to that fence could now come closer to the police department and I'm losing snow storage space. If you leave that where it's gonna be up to...
Well, hold on, Irish.
Can I interject?
Yes.
Is this, if, if the police chief and the community garden people are comfortable with this, and, and I ask you all to pay attention to this, would you all be comfortable with the board conditioning a fence of height and location to be agreed upon prior to installation with confirmation to the code office? So you two work out the height, do the stake thing, and then before a fence gets put in, you guys provide me with something signed by all of you that you've examined this, done the stake test, and this is what you're gonna do for a height or a location? Is that something that would be kind of a compromise?
Yeah. Would you guys be amenable to that? It would have to be, it would be contingent
upon the parties being amenable because if they do go to six-foot fence...
Right, 'cause that way, if you guys wanted it closer to the garden, it could happen, as long as it's, you know, as long as everyone's okay with that. And then it just goes through Irish.
And that would prevent, that would prevent the risk of it being moved closer to your department, but it would have to be amenable to...
I'm not concerned about that. It's just if we leave it up to, I mean, let's make a decision.
Let's not leave it open-ended. I understand what you're saying, but for a six-foot fence, because a permit's not required, it would be up to the applicant to be amenable to reporting to me prior to installing a six-foot fence because I don't permit those, they're not required. Is that something that...
I just think that, I, I think, in my opinion, I'm gonna say, I feel like that that would be poor form on our part, because as public servants, how hard are they gonna push back against, you know, the town? They're, they're gonna, and, and you've been very agreeable. You've, you've told us what your needs are. He's expressed his needs. I, I think if we can meet his needs, we should. And I think a good compromise would look like, we go down there on an afternoon, we drive in a six-foot stake and we drive in an eight-foot stake, and we set it at the proposed area, and we, a representative from the community garden, a representative from the police department, and, and a few representatives from us say, yeah, that's what right looks like, and that's the condition.
I have a, I think that's a too, too tall of an ask, because if it was any other situation, if it was at a residency...
We would just condition it, and we'd make them either cause.
We would just say, put up a fence. And we don't, the only times that, like, we've had issues is, let's say a pickleball court comes in and someone wants sound deadening. That's the compromise that we've had. They haven't, we haven't asked, anyone hasn't, no one has asked for a taller fence.
Actually, we, one of our select board members asked for a fence to an adjoining property that adjoined his, so it's, it's an unreasonable ask.
And they, and they comp... They compromised the, the, the planning board didn't do anything for that. They compromised with the contractors. That was not us saying, you have to put a fence in. They agreed outside of the planning board meeting to what was okay and what wasn't.
Do we know if a fence company has been consulted, I'm sorry, on this fence? Have we, has a fence company been consulted, or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a estimate on a six-foot fence, 332 feet long, with a four-foot removable gate of our choice somewhere along that, more of a fire escape type issue.
Chief, did they express whether they thought that would give you ample privacy for what you were looking for?
This was literally quickly. This happened between Tuesday and this evening. It's the company that we use, the fencing that currently is at the police department. They did send us an estimate, so they, they gave us what we asked for, and at the time, it was six-foot fence. Again...
So I, and another piece of this, not to interrupt, but, you know, this is a very short-fused response on them, because we've put them in an awkward spot where they were not privy to the plans from the get-go, and now they're having to scramble and, and we're kinda putting them in the hot seat, right? I mean, the fence issue has only come up... When did the fence issue come up, like this week?
They were, they were notified with the fire department and everybody else. Terry notifies everybody. Everybody gets the packet at the beginning. The fence issue was brought up recently. I'm not sure why that was brought up recently, but the packet went out to everybody they got at the same time you guys did.
Mm-hmm.
So it's...
And that seemed what the compromise was, is to put up a stockade fence to, to have some privacy.
Just, just to respond to what you said, I, the idea of putting a six-foot stake and an eight-foot stake and us making a decision on that, I think is beyond our scope. I would not be...
I would agree with that.
I would not be involved with that.
I will go on record saying I have expressed my concerns from the very first time that I heard about this.
Yep.
So, don't misunderstand that this has, this just didn't pop up in the last week. I've been expressing my concerns from the very beginning.
In your letter.
We're just now getting to them being addressed.
And, if I may...
I acknowledge that, chief. I was just stating that you weren't unaware of the project until Monday.
No, I'm aware. The first day that I was notified, I was...
I was just making, making that clear that, to the board, that you guys get notified the same as they do at the beginning, so.
Going back to the chief's original comment at the beginning of, of his words, he was asked, would you prefer a six or eight-foot fence? And he said an eight-foot fence is optimal, meaning what he really would like. So, so I'm kind of comfortable giving him what he wants.
I would be there as well.
See, I'm on the other side of the fence.
I know.
Literally and figuratively.
I, I just think of it as a cost, as a cost thing. I mean, it's, it costs taxpayer money to put this fence up. I mean...
My question is, is it, is it in our purview to even make that stipulation?
The height?
Hannah, yeah. Is that, is that in our, our ability to even stipulate a six or an eight-foot fence?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Oh, um, it is in your ability to impose conditions that you deem necessary, but the question then comes down to whether or not you can tie it to a specific need. And in this case, the need is the safety concerns that were expressed by the chief. But is there a tangible reason as to why eight is better than six? I don't know. Is there potentially the compromise with moving it up the hill and then still using a six-foot fence and saving thousands of dollars or however much the fence costs? Maybe. So I guess the question is, yes, you can, but is it justifiable? Does that answer the question?
I, I am...
No, but thanks.
I am stuck squarely in, I would love the height to be at the eight-foot point, but I'm okay with a six-foot fence two feet up the hill creating the eight-foot point to save money.
Right.
If that could be somehow kind of put in...
Or what if the ground swaled, you know, so it has a berm and then it's six feet?
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's still doing the same thing.
Right. I'm not hung up on, it has to be eight feet of wood fence. I'm, I'm hung up on, I want that level...
Of privacy.
Of privacy made.
And I, I agree, Rick. I think, I think that's, that's where we're coming out here is, eight feet is better than six feet for the issues that the chief stated. So therefore, how we get there is really not us, but it's, it's, you know, it needs to be worked out to their satisfaction.
So we would ask them if they're amenable to looking at moving their fence back to achieve the eight-foot...
Sure.
Elevation.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a reasonable stipulation to say, you know, make every, every, I mean, I, you know, I know these people personally, and I know that, you know, they're honest, honorable people. And I think if we said to them, make every possible effort to move this up the hill as far as you can without blocking the sunlight to the food garden to get that fence as high as possible, I think that's a, a healthy compromise.
I mean, it's gonna require Dennis to go move like 30 stakes two feet up the hill.
Now Dennis, Dennis, with that...
I'd like to speak to the idea of moving the fence.
Absolutely.
So, the fence parallel to the... This fence right here, parallel...
Correct. You gotta speak in the mic. They're gonna, they're gonna yell at us.
You can pick it up if you like. You can take it with you.
We know which one you're talking about.
Okay, so that stockade fence that parallels the driveway?
Yes.
I don't think there's two feet of elevation gain between that fence and the fence of the garden. So you, you'd have to move it up inside the garden, and that's not gonna work.
Right.
Okay? So, a, a thought occurs to me is that keep it in its present position and bring in Phil and lift it up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like berm it or...
Put a berm underneath it and lift it up.
Yep.
Case closed.
I mean, that would cost significantly less than adding another two feet by, what would you say, 300 feet long?
Estimate for 300...
Yeah, if you're gonna speak, you gotta speak in front of the mic. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just preventing getting yelled at.
We're looking to get microphones out here.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just say too, that, that we'll be taking, they'll be taking soil out to make the new, the new, the, parking lot, thank you, that's the word, the parking lot, which could be used to make the berm.
Yeah. Yes, so, 332 feet of six-foot fence came in at $14,605, an additional $550 if we wanted the four-foot gate.
Okay.
So you're at...
$15,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
$15,000. Oh, five. That's at six feet.
That's at six feet, yeah.
I'll get you a copy of this, do I just...
So, let me just ask the, so the, the overall plan, like I noticed that that site is, has a good slope to it. And I know that at the top, you talked about making a cut there to make a level area. Is that gonna, is that gonna be like terraced, or is it gonna be a lot of it leveled out, or just that particular area?
No, it's mostly just that one corner to be able to, one, lower that, that corner so it's not up above the rest of the garden, and also to allow a space to move material around that corner to where we'll store the woodchips and the compost.
Okay.
Okay? And there, you know, but going back to the, where the Sally driveway turns and goes into the garage and, and, I mean, people from coming off that walkway, you know, the, the idea of the, the chain thing, that's one approach. And I think Phil brought up the idea of a vegetative thing. And if we do that back close to the driveway, the vegetative approach won't impact snow removal, 'cause it's what, 20 feet or more, you know? So that's another solution to, to that moving, you know, and that, that walkway is five feet right now.
It's five feet wide right now?
It's five feet wide right now. So it's adequate for people with mobility issues right now. All garden equipment will already be in the garden, wheelbarrows and everything. Our plan is to provide those big pieces of equipment to everybody. They don't need to bring things, they don't need to even bring shovels. A lot of shovels... they don't need to even bring shovels, we'll have shovels and rakes on-site. All they have to do is come with their gardening gloves and their lunch and some water, or whatever they want, you know? It's not a bunch of equipment coming in with them. Okay.
I like the idea of the berm, lifting a six-foot section of fence.
I mean, even if it only lifted it a foot, and we ended up with a seven-foot fence, I think that, you know, it's closer to what is optimal. What's that?
Not another number we gotta fight about.
Seven, now seven feet.
Well, I think I would be, I would be, you know, amenable, I mean, I would be okay with just stipulating.
It would have to be basically be swaled, so the water runoff would still be going to where the water needs to go.
So that could easily be addressed, you know, that's like, you know, put a pipe down, let the water run through, you know?
Right, and then just divert it into the...
Not a big deal.
Okay. And you guys would be amenable to adding that berm?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
It's kind of cool, we haven't talked about the garden at all. Garden's great.
All right, all right.
So are we looking for a motion?
Yes.
I will make the motion that we find the application complete, no?
We approve it.
Approve the application with the condition that the fence is amended with a berm for the eight-foot visual height. And are you also amenable to the vegetative barrier along the walkway as discussed as a condition, sir?
Yes, so, you know, do you have any guidance on what you want to see the vegetative?
You're the plant guy.
I was thinking more like...
Just not something that's invasive and gonna create all kinds of issues.
Something that would obstruct people from just turning and walking.
Crown of the thorns.
A hedge.
A hedge would be fine.
Think a hedge, yeah, yes.
Crown of thorns.
So I would make a motion that we approve the project with the understanding that we will come up with an eight-foot fence solution and a vegetative barrier between the walkway and the police department.
Can I just ask for clarification, is that an eighth, a berm for the entire length of the whole entire fence?
My understanding, it was for the hundred-and-one-foot section parallel to the...
Directly behind the police department.
Talking about that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Are we clear on that now? I'll second the motion.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We beat the hell out of that one.
Hey, we got there.
Twenty-minute recess. Be right back, we're running over to our corner post to get us all something.
All right, so moving on is the land use ordinance amendments. So...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Did I say it? Dude, I don't blame you, put me in your pocket, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night, Emory. Good night, Dennis, thank you.
Good night.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Bye.
So, quick question for Terry, possibly Irish, the talk from Lisa Chase, is that about the spot with the, right after it, about the signs?
No, those are two separate things.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what, it just says, "The purpose of this ordinance suggestion would be to regulate and control the placement of signs."
That's the content of her email, yeah, I just cut and pasted onto a single sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all it said.
Well, what's the suggestion?
To regulate and control the placement of signs on utility poles within the town.
I believe she's referring to things like, you know, plowing calls, seven-seven-five.
Garage sale signs.
Sorry, eight-six-seven-five-three-oh-nine, right?
Well, I mean, anyone can put, on an easement, anyone can put signs anywhere, I mean, that's...
Fun fact, technically, it's illegal to attach anything to a telephone pole.
To a utility pole, with a freestanding sign, I think.
Right, but I'm just saying, as for easements, let's say, let's say you, on your lawn, right next to the road, you could say, "Vote for this."
Well, some towns have ordinances that address that, but she's only addressing utility poles, anything, in her.
So around town, and I've seen the problem.
Oh, yard sales.
Solar signs, and the tree guys, and the, whatever it is.
Or they, and they, sometimes the yard sale signs stay there long after.
And somebody will break half the sign off, and it still stays there, it looks like, yeah.
Like they got a telephone pole for sale, because it just says, "Yeah"?
Yeah, yeah, I wish there were nothing on the telephone poles, except wire.
Did you say it was illegal to put anything on the utility pole?
CMP says no, yes, they said nothing on their poles.
Technically, it's illegal, so I could, if authorized by certain town managers in the room, go around and just rip all of them off and throw them in the dumpsters.
Or find them.
Technically, technically, I cannot find people, I fee them.
Right.
But I could provide them with...
How she says it is, this would prohibit the business signs on utility poles within our town.
Like the tree guys, or the solar companies, or those types of things.
But then you're saying it's okay for yard sales and others?
I'm telling you straight up, it's illegal to put anything on there.
Right.
So that's already a law, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, okay.
We don't need an ordinance, we just need enforcement.
Like code enforcement.
Yeah, I know, I got nothing to do these days, I should just jump around.
Well, that's when you just call the police and have them tear down.
Yeah, technically, it's illegal, not against code.
Right, exactly. All right.
So yes, I can start ripping them down if you'd like, and I will do the service of calling the companies that put them up and giving them the option to get their signs back, but...
If you need help ripping them down, let me know.
All right, I'm gonna call you on that, because I will tell you, in one of the municipalities I worked for, they had, my old boss, one of the municipalities, she used to love rolling around and ripping them signs off, and he was duking it out with one guy who owned his own little, like, yard cleaning company, and the dude must have had a cherry picker, because the last sign, none of us could get to, it was like twenty feet up the pole.
I got a forty-foot pole.
It wasn't even like a point, I don't even know what the point was, because you never noticed it there.
So, moving forwards, on to what Les is reading, from Code Enforcement Officer Office, "To bring the L U O in line with the approval we just received from the town attorney, I propose that we add the following under seven dot one-three dot F four. Off-premise signs shall be restricted to main DOT official business directional signs, and must comply with all M DOT official business directional sign rules and regulations."
Okay.
I just have one stipulation on that.
Which is?
Farms.
What about them?
Seasonal times, farms put up corn signs or other things, and they have to...
This is not the same.
Okay, all right, that's, just making sure.
Those little, like the Dick's Fix It.
Dick's Fix It shop has one, the DOT has these signs.
Cranberry Meadow Road.
We ran into an issue because a home occupancy here in town wanted to have a directional sign because his business is suffering because of his location. He wanted the directional signs off the main routes. We do not regulate that, that's through main DOT, however, our ordinance did not allow for that.
Our current sign ordinance?
Our current sign ordinance does not allow for that, clearly allow for that. So we did receive some guidance from the town attorney that we could technically, on a, well, this part of it's gray enough, we can do that thing, but we don't want to be doing it on a, we can do that on a gray area thing, when it's as simple as just flopping this in there and saying that they can legally have these signs.
Yeah, they just have to go through M DOT to do that.
They have to go through M DOT, there's an application process, they have to fill out the application, I have to sign it before DOT will even consider it, then they order the sign through DOT's specific authorized vendors with their specific authorized criteria, they also have to renew them every year, because the DOT does remove signs if they're not maintaining the fees for them. That's how they keep us from having seven hundred small business signs. We're just trying to make it so that our, our home occupancies that are needing to have people directed to them have a fighting chance here in town, so...
Seems like a no-brainer.
For law businesses, right?
Yeah, but this is for...
Well, I understand what the impetus was.
This is under home occupancy.
Yeah, go for it, James, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to emphasize, like, for like farms, for off-premise signs, we probably should specifically enumerate that in our ordinance.
Yes.
Along with a whole host of things that, like, to be more agriculturally friendly.
Yes.
So that's, there's a farm study done by Patrick Carter from Maine Farmland Trust. There's a big effort in town for open space preservation and farmland preservation. There's actually a committee, open space planning group, and conference of planning, it's all kind of messing together, and the farmland report has a bunch of suggestions, so, that'd be in line with one of those, so, something to...
Yeah, my thought was, I just wouldn't want to restrict someone that has like a temporary farm stand to say, "Hey, we're over here."
Yeah, no, 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 I don't want to do that either, because quite frankly, that farm fresh corn just hits home, you know? This is just so our home businesses, because our, our actual signage for commercial businesses allows for a whole lot more, a home occupancy, and most home occupancies, they're not having a lot of foot traffic, but some of these places are harder to find, and we want to give them a fair chance.
Okay. All right, so with the next part, Dan and Karen Cruchow, looks like they're asking about industrial building, large-scale businesses from moving into residentially zoned areas. So, a large-scale business can't go in a residential area unless it's in the R C I zone, and that's residential, commercial, industrial zone. That would have to be a rezoning issue? I don't think that that would really be, I mean, we would need more information on just that.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, and I am staring at the person who can tell me if I am mistaken, the complaint from this in regards to one particular business that is technically a home occupancy that is basically operated out of a residential area, the trucks are stored there for, but they're, they're used off-site, but they're stored local, I believe, is that the, get back up to the microphone, just bring it back to the area.
That's accurate, so it's off, you know, it's off one of the not-major corridors, but pretty close to one of the, oh, that's off Old Sanford Road, I'll just be specific. And it's just something that went through code a couple of years ago, that we have nothing against, that would be specifically against it. So, yeah, it's their business, they store them at their home, they don't operate out of there, obviously, but it's kind of their starting base, and it's disruptive towards the, to the neighbors, they live directly across from it. So they have the equipment that starts up, and then they go about their day.
That predates me, so I had to get the historical background from James.
So, I'm just trying to think at that point, so you would want to limit machinery at a residential area? I mean, is that essentially what they're trying to say?
Does that seem like an adequate representation of what this family is looking for?
She references a letter, but there was no letter.
The letter went to the Select Board a few years back.
I can probably, I probably have those emails in my email, just so you have the whole context of it, because it would be a good key study to understand.
But I mean, if it's a home occupancy, I mean, as long as they don't have more than, what, one employee, or no employees?
I'm not sure what the actual deal with that one is, but it appears to be, from what I understand from my conversations with James, just basically home base, they just start there and leave.
I think if, and I can locate that letter, the original letter, I believe that they're unhappy with the expansion since they moved in, like, it's like a lot of things, it's just naturally grown over time.
It happens.
Yeah, exactly.
Jerry, you have a question for me?
I guess, so...
Jerry's trying to ask me a question. No, Les, go ahead.
You said something about one employee?
Well, in a home occupancy, it's limited to how many employees you can have at your residence, right?
If you're operating there.
Right, well, a home oc, you are operating at your house.
Well, so I'm just, for clarity, because, you know, I own a roofing company and a construction company, I don't run it out of my home, just because I don't want those people at my house.
Right. But if you did, you would be limited to how many employees you can have.
I don't think so.
Oh, yes, it's in the ordinance.
So for a home occupation?
Well, it's different, I think it's different, like, when, you know, somebody came before us and they said, we have, "He operates in his home."
He's operating, you're thinking the difference between in the home, with what Brian's trailer was doing, versus out of the home, which is what this company is doing.
Different license.
Right, and they're talking about, if, I think I know who they're talking about, they don't operate out of there.
So it's not a home oc, it's just that's like what James says.
Park trucks there, park equipment there, they go off and do jobs someplace else.
So, I could agree with that, because if it's a residential area, you shouldn't be having commercial stuff at a, unless it's your place of business.
Our ordinance says, and I think this is probably where this is coming from, nothing before seven, I'm sure this is all going on before seven, in the ways and everything.
No, the report was just the number of them, it wasn't about the time.
Just about the volume.
The time of the day is seven o'clock, I'd like to see the letter just to have you know.
Yeah, okay.
All right, well, we'll revisit this, we'll revisit with the letter, how's that?
Yeah, and I wrote myself a note to find that original letter.
Yeah. All right, so moving on, for campgrounds and tenting grounds, I've read through this, the one thing...
It's only number five that was to change, just the light one.
Yes.
Yes.
Because they're not in color, it was in color when I wrote it, but...
Yeah, I read it through the email, and I saw the, there's one thing.
So five and six is also, six is also new, I believe.
Yeah, five and six are the new, the new items that I'd like to see added.
In eight-point-one, or eight?
Yeah, eight-point-one, so it would be eight-point-one, point-eight, point-five, and point-six.
Okay, so I have, this is about number two, campsites shall be laid out and screened in such a manner that none are within view from public roads, navigable rivers, existing residences, or approved subdivision lots. Any combination of evergreen planting, landscaped, earthen berms, or solid fencing may be used to achieve the screening standard. My thought is, navigable rivers. Most campsites, especially in central northern Maine, you can see tenting areas, and you can tent right on the river.
I didn't write that part.
I know, I know, but we're at a point where we can change this.
I'm with you on that.
I almost think we should strike that out.
I would, I would agree with that.
No, no, just the navigable rivers. I think having, having that ability to be able to tent next to a river, even if someone sees you while they're canoeing, should be okay.
When they say navigable, are they talking about a major?
Well, just like, if you're canoeing, yeah, or boat, or, okay.
So we are... Strike navigable rivers?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, me too.
Other than that, I had no issues.
I can eat lobster on a navigable river. So we're striking that whole paragraph?
No, just the navigable rivers. Yep, that's it.
So five and six are what we...
So basically, you're still making it screened from the road, from the neighbors.
Just not from the river.
Just not from a river.
That makes sense to me, but I wasn't, that wasn't the, the hole I had to, the row I had to go.
We just approved for...
Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam.
Yes.
Campground, they're right up on the river, and you can see them, what's to say if someone else wanted to put another campsite further up, we'd have to say, "Well, you can't do that now."
There's also residences that can see.
Well, that's, yeah, that's fine, they just can't see everything else.
So I just requested the addition of, or the consideration of the addition of numbers five and six.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for me on those two items?
Does, does five talk about two different things? Recreational vehicles and tent sites not within the boundaries of an approved campground shall be restricted to use between April first and October thirty-first. And then it goes on to talk about... And then it goes on to talk about RVs being hooked up to potable water and septic, but not during those time periods.
What it, what that is, what that means is that if, if you want to have your family come stay in your RV at your property, that RV is required actually under the subsurface and the, and the drinking water regulations to be hooked up to potable water and septic, but it's not called out in our ordinance. Put it in there just because it's typical to put it in there when you put in the other pieces. What I'm looking for is a very specific start and stop dates to prevent people from living in RVs year round in somebody's yard, because an RV is not, by definition, it is not intended for year round use in somebody's yard.
So the potable water and septic are irrelevant if you're outside of those dates.
Okay.
Let me ask you two questions.
Because of those, those dates, they should be closed down.
Terry?
So why did, why do we say or shall be able to be emptied periodically? Is, shouldn't it be?
No, it just says and shall, either.
Or shall, yes. Or shall be able to.
So it needs a connection, or it needs to be.
Why do not just require a hookup to a septic?
Because if you're, if, no, something I do have experience with here, if you have an RV at, say you're out on Diamond Hill, or you own property out on Diamond Hill, or, or, you know, we're gonna go camp at Rick's place out on Alipon.
Bring it up.
He has a septic system, so there is an ability to hook a RV into a, an existing subsurface system. However, when you're in, closer to town and you're on town water and sewer, you don't have that ability to just dump in there, so then you need to be able to have it.
Right, or you're just in a lot that has no septic or well.
Or you can't get to the septic without driving over the leach field and causing damage, so it needs to be, we need to specify that they need to be taken, either have a honey wagon to it, or preferably because it's an RV, it should still be in a drivable condition.
But someone, according to this, someone can have an RV parked in their driveway from the date, continuous from April 1st to October 31st, and, okay.
So, my question is, is this limiting when people can tent at their house?
No.
Because it, it just says, not within the boundaries of.
Honestly, part of that is, you would think people would not be tenting all through the winter anyways.
Yeah, but you never know.
We do every month.
Right, I have one planned this month.
Today, today, today has been a day for me to double hockey sticks.
So, this is just basically talking about campsites? This isn't talking about?
This isn't talking about the RV parks, this is talking about at home, what people, basically we're.
Well, it's campgrounds and tent, campgrounds and tenting grounds.
Yes.
So you need to have the 10 acres, right, for the, for it to be classified as a campground or the tent grounds.
But it's as an RV thing, where else are we gonna set it?
Right, well, I'm not talking about the RV, I'm just talking about the tenting.
Shouldn't we just strike out the tent part, maybe?
If you guys are comfortable removing the tent part, that's.
My only question would be, are we?
Or make it a separate par.
If we put this as an ordinance, is this precluding somebody, and I, and I would say, let's say somebody has a developable lot, right, and they have, they've punched their well, they've punched their septic, and they're a home builder, they're building their own home, and they park a four season RV on their property and they have it properly winterized, they, are we saying that during those months, they can't, they can't live in their RV while they're building their home? Is that, is that what we're saying?
If you're saying properly winterized, that means no, they can't live in it, because when you winterize it, you put antifreeze into the water.
No, you, there are four season campers, you can weather it.
Weatherized, okay, just making sure what I'm following where you're going.
That's what I meant.
Okay, well, technically, technically, camp, RVs are a secondary use, so technically, officially, legally, under the code, they can't do that anyways, because you cannot have a secondary use on a lot with no primary use.
Really?
Yes.
So you cannot buy a.
Is that a town or a state thing?
That's code state, that's, you, town is ordinances, every, when I say code, I'm talking state level regulations, ordinances, and that comes from a couple of different departments.
That's illegal to do?
You're not supposed to do it.
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 Now, do we, do we push the issue? No, that's not where I'm going with this. This is more for the people that are trying to create, you know, there, the code allows me, as the, I call it the a-hole rule, the authority having jurisdiction, to allow things that are, you know, provided I can be sure that they're safe.
Reasonable.
Yes, that I can make reasonable, reasonable changes. What we're trying to prevent here are the people that are creating, in essence, a illegal campground on their property with taking in every Tom, Dick, and Harry that might have an RV, an old broken down RV they can drag in, will never move again.
Right, okay.
And this gives me more teeth, because it gives them the summer season, which is when you would typically have your family and friends up. And honestly, this type of thing is something that is, I mean, if you have your, you have an RV and you have it hooked up and it's reasonably weatherized, and your family's coming up for Christmas and they're gonna stay for the week from Christmas to New Year's, you set that up, odds are good your neighbors are not gonna call me because you happen to have out of town guests crashing in your RV. However, you move somebody in and they're living there, and six months later, they're still coming and going, somebody's gonna call me. This gives me the teeth to make sure that you're not impacting your neighbors negatively.
But according to this, someone can live there for six months.
Yeah, but I mean, in the winter.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be the short term.
Yeah, it becomes a short, it, it, it just puts the teeth behind the RV being a recreational vehicle, not a living situation.
All right.
And if you guys want to remove the tents, I mean, hey, they all are crazy enough.
No, because I, I read further and it says tenting ground. So I mean, as long as it's not restricting a personal, like, if you want to tent out, like Rick said, once a month, we should be able to, as long as we're not trying to restrict that.
I'm just trying to prevent the creation, because we are starting to see that here, unfortunately, where we're getting some people that are creating some very, and it's, it's a risk to them, the neighbors, as far as sanitation, if they're not able to remediate the waste, remove the waste.
So by weatherization, you're meaning remove the waste?
The whole?
When you winterize an RV, you not only pump out the waste, you also, they drain the water.
Drain the water, yeah.
Yeah, it needs to be, it needs to be winterized.
Like you would do a boat or anything.
Yep, and it's just to.
And we want to make that a rule, do we?
Just like every other municipality I've worked in, yeah, it'd be nice to have the teeth behind it.
Okay, so parking in circulation, there was no changes. That was part B. Health and safety, there is, and this is still for campgrounds and tent, tenting grounds.
Yes.
So, the striking out of picnic table and, so basically, they just need a trash receptacle and a possible, further down, it talks about.
The dumpsters. And, and dumpsters being in a fenced enclosure for all campers.
Okay.
But I, I'm gonna be honest, that's just my petty betty side, is the reality is with most of these people in RV parks, they're not going to have picnic tables out there. I don't feel like that's something we should be requiring, that's something that's an amenity that should be, you know.
Yeah, okay. Does anyone have any concerns about that?
I don't want to have to enforce that, oh my God, you don't have a picnic table out here.
Right, right. I mean, if they want to put one there, they can.
Yeah, they, they won't.
Make it an option and not.
They won't prohibit it, it just means that I don't have to go checking and making sure that everybody's got a gosh darn picnic tables inside their door, especially since a lot of these people will have just their camp chairs and a little camp table and be much more comfortable in a picnic table.
It looks like number four, you've made changes to number four.
Yeah, that was my next one, is each campsite shall be provided with a masonry or metal fireplace provided in, yeah, approved in writing by the fire chief.
I just put question marks by that, because I wasn't sure if that was something that you guys wanted to look at or think of, and the only reason that I did that is because I'm not sure, and I should have checked with the chief when I was talking to him earlier, I'm not sure if they are checking these things.
I know, I know that a personal residence, you can get a fire pit approved.
Okay.
And they come in and inspect it, and then it's, I can't remember the length of time, but I want to say it's like two or three years that it's approved for.
Okay, I just put question marks by it, because when I was, when I did it, I just wanted to make it as easy as possible for you guys and put the whole ordinance in there.
At this point, it's a commercial thing, it's not just a home residence thing, so I would think that having approval with the fire department would be important.
Can I ask, we're talking about a campground, right, and a campsite within a campground, and them having a place for a fire.
Yep, should we say may instead of shall?
Yes, because there are lots of ways that you can have a fire appropriately in a campsite at a campground. Above, you know, we do it in scouts all the time, right, 55 gallon drum cut off with legs put on it, a hibachi, I mean, there's a lot of different ways that you.
Solo stoves now.
Right, so I, I think I just would be careful to limit it to simply a metal fireplace.
Right, well, I think what, what this is just trying to say is that they would provide a.
An area?
It does, well, I mean, this just says it would provide a masonry or metal fireplace. It doesn't say anywhere that you couldn't have a fire other than that designated area.
So are we gonna say may or shall?
May.
Yeah.
May.
I put a question marks on it, because I've had to do a couple of, and I don't understand this, I'm probably just at this chief before I say it, but I've had a couple of people that have had to call me for fireplace inspections, because when they've called the fire department, they've been told that the fire department will not do that, so I've had to go in and do the NFPA and do the sign off for them for their insurances, so I put question marks, because I wasn't sure if that's something our fire department even offers as a service, but you answered that question.
Yeah, well, I know for a residence, they do.
Okay.
I've done that a couple times now.
I feel like if we change that word from shall to may, we're completely changing the whole thing.
Well, that, because if we.
Well, they may be provided, where they may be re.
Or they may be approved?
No, they may be provided.
No, 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 maybe provided, so that way they don't have to provide a fireplace.
Provide it, but if they do, it has to be approved.
But if they do, it has to be approved.
Right, right.
Yep.
So if you do it, you have to get approval. If you don't do it, you don't.
If they, so if they build masonry fireplaces or stone fireplaces, they are getting approval before or after, in fact.
Okay, how about this, each campsite may be provided with a masonry or metal fireplace which shall be approved in writing by the fire.
Yes, okay, all right.
That sounds good.
Clarification, because words matter.
All right, so now we're going down to a whole different thing with definitions, and that's temporary, temporary structure. Any structure that is used only temporarily for a maximum of XX days that is not permanently affixed to the ground, or to any structure that is permanently affixed to the ground.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it into the definitions and you guys can set the dates.
Right.
So are we talking about like portable storage shelters?
What did you have in mind?
Yeah, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Temporary, like, you know, pods, people moving pods on and, because they, they are temporary for the next three years.
Right, right.
You know, temporary should have a, a specific meaning.
Yeah.
In my world.
So we need to pick them day number?
So would that, that include like a?
Temporary storage.
Porta potty sitting on?
Uh, no, porta potties are, porta potties are a little bit different, because they are, those are actually kind of regulated by the subsurface wastewater regulations, where they're required, where they're not allowed, that kind of thing, how long, for durations of.
Construction dumpsters.
Construction dumpsters, I usually handle under my permitting and the permitting requirements. But it's more along the lines of things like, like storage trailers, or even depending on the length of time you guys choose, or what you'd like to add to this, you know, things like greenhouses, temporary greenhouses that are up just for the summer purposes, those are temporary, why the hell are they coming to me for them, you know what I mean? So.
Well, that's a variable number then.
But if you, but if you set a number, so let's say six weeks, or 90 days, we can even go for three months, I don't, so 90 days.
Right, right.
If you say 90 days, and you could put in this.
Excluding agricultural use?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I just, I think of, right.
Excluding agricultural use.
Right, because a temporary structure, okay, I've raised pigs before and we moved them, so we have a temporary shelter for them, and we keep them for six months and then we get rid of them.
And then they go to freezer camp.
Yes.
Same thing with roiler chickens.
Right, exactly, same with chicken coops.
So we could do, I would be more than comfortable with an agricultural exemption.
Okay.
I just need something that gives me the teeth I need, so that these people that are stockpiling the, you know, trailer beds and stuff for storage.
Okay.
Those are not being set right on property lines, which they are, and because it's a temporary structure.
So do you feel that 90 days would be?
I think it should be longer.
I think it should be like six months.
Six months?
I think six, I think six months.
If we think about the Edge's construction trailer, for example, it's gonna be there for a long time.
But that's a.
But that's for construction.
That's a construction trailer, that's a different thing.
Okay, that's not a temporary structure?
But there are construction sites that have cargo containers full of storage and equipment.
What, is that considered a permanent structure?
But I look at like the guy who stores his boat under a shelter logic, right? Like you have a shelter logic in your backyard, you park your boat under it.
Nine months of the year.
Probably, close to nine months out of the year, I think six months is a reasonable.
Well, I mean, some people leave their boat in there year round and only take it out a couple of times a year, right?
Correct, correct.
But at that point, it turns to a shelter.
It's a permanent structure at that point, you know, because if it's staying up for a year, it's not.
All right, so 180 days?
180 days seems reasonable, I think.
I think, because, you know, I know my friend had a pipe burst in his, one of his apartments, and so he had a pod in his yard while he did renovations to the, to the apartment.
I think that's very reasonable.
And again, that, but again, that comes into line with the, I can make exceptions under, for things like that, that fall under a construction heading.
Well, storage container is different, that's not temporary storage.
But this is for, this is for the porter who wants to have all the things, all the things ever.
That's why she said the storage container.
So you're saying a storage container is temporary storage?
Storage containers are supposed to be temporary. They can apply for a building permit, and then on a pad, and make them a permanent structure.
Okay, okay.
But if they're going to tell me that, no, I parked this directly on my property line and peed my neighbor off, because it's a temporary structure that's been here for two years, that's not a temporary structure.
Now, what if you move it from one spot? I'm just, I'm just trying to say, if it's, if it's temporary, and you move it and you change the use of it.
You get a new 180 days.
Right.
No, if it's a temporary structure, if it's a temporary thing that is brought onto your property at the end of that time period that you guys are going to set, then it needs to be removed, discontinued. So like, so you've got your greenhouse up for the summer, you've got your greenhouse up for the summer, you take it down for the winter, then you put it back up in the summer, when the spring again, then it's.
Sometimes for a greenhouse, it's as easy as just removing the film off it, you know, because some of them, like I have a hoop house, and I only use it for a couple months, and it's just a film that goes on it, and when I'm done with it, I take the film off.
Yeah, and when you take the film off, it's no longer a actual usable space, it's just a couple of frigging poles in the ground, and nothing that the snow is gonna collect on, and, yes, it's a birdie jungle, yeah. It's nothing that the snow is gonna collect on and crush you. And yes, it's a birdie jungle. It's nothing that the snow is gonna collect on and crush you.
Now, what if someone had a trailer, like a, a truck trailer, and they take it off their property for a day after a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-nine days and then puts it back on the next day after that? Does that, would that reset that? I'm, I'm just asking.
No, because they didn't discontinue the use of it for any length of time. They just moved it.
We can tell people to discontinue.
Well, this would be new, so anything that's there already is grandfathered in. This would be new stuff coming in.
Also, the storage trailers are already defined and they, it's limited to six months, so it's already.
Six months, okay.
There's already precedent in there.
Six months is.
Minus the ones that already have grandfathered in. Because there's some storage trailers that you, you can drive by and they've been there.
They're probably in violation.
They're in violation.
Okay.
They're in violation, so. Yes, Jerry?
There's three across the street from me that have been there for four years.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked why are they still there and nobody would give that answer.
Uh, you didn't ask me why and I, I've got, um, a lot of those. I've got a list of places that have them that are in violation, but.
It won't be enforced.
So a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty days.
I think a hundred and eighty days sounds reasonable.
Eighty days.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
One eighty.
One eighty. And signs. So I know at the selectmen's meeting, there was an issue brought up about commercial signs on vehicles, lighted signs on vehicles.
Light is.
Look, man.
Domino's delivery.
Do I look like the DOT?
No, but, so. My thought is this, if they're parked and they're not driving and they're over there, should the lights be off? And then when they go to deliver, their lights are on. Cause no one downtown can have a lighted sign. But it's okay for a car to have a lighted sign?
Uber does it, Lyft does it.
Right, but only when they're operating.
Mister Chair, you've got.
Okay.
You're gonna start looking.
To your point, Tuesday night, American Legion, Paul and I were here, parked in the town's parking lot. The Domino's car was over there and I can't remember if the light was on or not, but it was in the parking spot over in our lot.
No, the light wasn't on.
Wasn't on, okay.
Yeah.
But that's what.
Well, they do have a parking issue that they're trying to work on now. And I know that the selectmen and the people at Great Works Construction are, and the, the, what is it? The tenants of the, that spot are trying to figure out a parking plan for that. But my concern is no one else can have a lit up sign was to say, like, I get it when they're driving to and from, they wanna advertise and that's great. But if they're just sitting there idling or the car's off and they have their lights on, I mean, who's to say Bad Wolf Butcher doesn't do that on their cars now? And then who does, who does that for untrucked and who does it for, um, you know?
Who's, who's gonna enforce this?
Yeah.
Well, that would be code enforcement at that point.
Yeah.
Just don't say that all signs shall be externally illuminated. So maybe we need to just modify that.
Yes.
Right. Well, in the land use ordinance, that, that is correct. All signs are supposedly, supposed to be externally lit.
I'll have to do some research on that because that might fall under the.
I think that's a DOT.
Yeah, cause it says all signs must be stationary with no intermittent lights.
But I don't know if they deem that an actual official sign under the. Let me do a little research on that, Mister Chair, and get back to you.
Okay.
Um, because that is a good point.
I just brought it up because the last selectmen's meeting or select board meeting I was at, it, it did get brought up.
Yeah, no, and it definitely warrants looking into, um, I just don't know and I.
Cause even like a taxi, most taxis, their lights are on when they're working. Like when they're traveling with passengers. If they're not traveling, if they're going to a place to pick someone up, the light's not on.
See, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm not telling you to put something in an ordinance that we don't have the legal right to do.
Right, right, and I totally, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think actually the change I wanted to make, I think James doesn't want me, right?
So the summer environment gas prices lit up?
I was going.
Altitude and illuminated sign?
Skip, okay.
We're skipping C?
We're gonna skip, we're gonna ignore the whole C thing.
Okay.
Okay, we're not gonna touch that. We're gonna leave that alone. Because James told me leave it alone.
Okay, now we're going on to F.
I'll tell you, just because, uh, the, the content of the signs is not regulated by this ordinance came right from our attorney from like past year.
Say that again, please.
The, the content is not regulated by this ordinance.
That's the original verbiage. I was going to change that to, because the, you know, there's been a big push about not having the words cannabis or marijuana on signs. So that's why I was going to change that, but, and I've been informed that that original statement that I wanted to change came originally from the town attorney.
I'm completely confused.
I am more confused than I was.
So they wanna keep the content of signs is not regulated by this section.
The content, the content of the signs.
Yes.
So we're gonna unstrike that and the rest of that sentence goes away.
That's correct.
Pretend that, pretend that that was never there.
Yeah.
No, the whole, your whole amendment's going away, the whole amendment.
That whole, all of C is getting left alone.
No, no, C's staying as is.
Right, okay.
Pretend nothing, pretend nothing on that page exists above F and that's the only thing you need to concern, what the rest is gonna stay the way it was.
So what C will says, will say is only what is stricken out.
Right, content of signs is not regulated by this section.
That's all it will say.
Okay.
So you're getting the first amendment stuff.
Yes, freedom of speech.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right.
I agree.
Well, it's, it's been something that's been being pushed, so I was going to bring it to the front. But actually, we've been very fortunate that our, um, marijuana and cannabis people have been very cooperative on that aspect anyway. So, so then we just added the directional signs for this in the general sign language carried over from the home.
So with F, properly licensed home occupations shall be allowed not more than one official business directional sign, O B D S. The O B D S must be permitted through the M D O T and comply with all O B D S requirements.
Tie back to the other thing we were talking about.
Yeah, it's a copy and paste. It just puts it in the sign section as well.
So now we're talking into dimensional requirements.
This was not me, so these are Jeremy's suggestions, so I'm bowing out of this conversation.
So this talks about minimum lot sizes.
Almost four acres.
And the only change is R threes.
Two changes to the R three.
Minimum lot size with public sewer and water and minimum lot size with septic in square feet.
Hundred and sixty grand.
Oh, that's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet.
Square feet, yeah. Three and a half acres.
Yeah. I mean, the idea of this is to prevent small lots in R three.
R three zone.
Which, I mean, that just is trying to limit how many subdivisions you can.
Residential agriculture.
Right.
Well, I think, I think subdivisions and solars are controlled in R three.
Yeah.
Amount of building permits and houses you can build in R three are controlled.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, you know, making almost a four acre house lot in R three is excessive, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that as well. Um, it. You go from R two, which is twenty thousand, which R three is, right now is at ninety thousand. So that's, that's a huge jump when R one's only at ten thousand. So ten thousand, twenty thousand, ninety thousand. I mean.
I think the thought process is not to make R three into an R two and R one by cramming them all together. But a hundred and sixty thousand is excessive for one single individual house out in R three.
Right, right. Um. Whether we raise it or keep it, I guess that is the question. I, I don't think a hundred and sixty is the right number.
I mean, ninety thousand is like two point three acres.
Yeah.
Which is a weird, I mean, if you're gonna do it by square feet, I guess, but if you're gonna do it by acreage, I would have rounded it to two and a half.
That's a good compromise. Is three acres reasonable for that area?
I think one of the things that we should consider, if I may, uh, add some input. You know, Jeremy and I and James and Mike had a pretty lengthy conversation about the preservation of farm and forest land here. And, um, and one of the things that came up and one of the things that was brought up by, um, somebody sent an email, I think, um, was that, you know, one of the things we wanna be careful of is to not devalue a farmer's retirement.
Mm-hmm, yep.
You know, farmer, farmer may have a hundred acres and we, we now just cut that property value in half.
Right.
Like doubling the density requirement.
Right.
So I think that the balancing.
It might not be the farmer, but it might be their kids that they don't wanna farm anymore and they wanna sell the property.
Tom, Tom mentioned it from the seventies. He said, you know, he saw, you know, the farmers, the kids don't wanna come into the farming business, so the farmer sells a lot to pay the taxes this year and eat. Sells a lot, sells a lot. So, and, and most farmers, that is their IRA. So, um, I, I'd, I'd be reluctant to raise it above the, it's over two acres now.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-seven thousand square feet is two acres. It's already over two acres.
Hmm.
Yeah, cause if you have ten acres and you keep it where it is now, you can do four lots. But if you have ten acres and you change it to three acres even, you're only getting three.
Two, oh, three acres.
Yeah, it's math, math's hard.
Well, right, but I, I. I guess the question is at what scale is it? Like if it's, like you said, if it's ten acres versus a hundred acres versus a thousand acres.
Right.
We wanna protect farmland, but if someone has ten acres of farmland, they should be able to divide it in four spots.
Right.
But if someone has, but at the same time, it's who are we to say that, all right, ten acres, you can subdivide that in four ways, but then when you get past a certain number, you have to spread it out more.
So I guess if I think about it in the opposite terms, I have a two point three acre lot and I have a house on it. And I have a septic on it and I have a well on it and I have lots of room around the rest of the property to walk. And I think it's plenty big enough for a house. And if I had to have three acres or four acres, what am I now doing with all of that extra land? So in my personal opinion, where we are at ninety thousand, even if it only went to a hundred thousand.
And are you R three?
I'm R three, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm in the exact same position. I like two point three acres, R three, and, uh, got plenty of land.
Yeah.
Plenty of land.
I think more land, yeah, it's gonna save more land, but only for that one homeowner.
Right.
You know, I mean.
All right, so I, I feel like we're all in agreeance that we are not changing that.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we're striking those out.
Also, the, the other issue, which is well taken, is that you, if you do have a farmer who wants to cut a certain portion of his land off for some sort of development, uh, which is his right, uh, in the R three area, all of a sudden, you're cutting the value significantly to them. And that's barely arbitrary.
You know, we had a lengthy conversation about one of the things that we're looking at is doing a, um, what do you call that? Uh, development rights?
Probably it's called a, a density, uh, density development fee. Basically, the idea would be you'd be able to pay into a fund to add density to a project to go add lots.
Protecting other property.
Yeah, that fund would go to the purchase of open space.
Right, so, so there, there's an example of, you know, a farmer has a hundred acres and he wants to transfer his development rights to somebody else to build in where we want the high density development.
Mm-hmm.
You do this, you just cut his, his retirement in half.
Right, yeah.
Again, another, you know, another example.
Yeah.
I think one way to achieve the same idea is to look at with conventional subdivision, planning board can require five to ten percent open space within a subdivision.
Hmm.
I would propose considering upping that to twenty percent.
Mm-hmm.
And then for a cluster, right now it's thirty percent. So looking at increasing that to maybe forty or fifty percent. I don't talk about, like, fifty might be high, but maybe forty, forty percent. But requiring more open space and putting more regulations around what open space is preserved is another way of kinda getting to that same idea of increasing the minimum lot size.
Good idea.
Yeah, I, I think when it comes to the green space, my thought is if we increase that, we should be able to also like make the lot sizes smaller. So that has that given take.
You're saying more general green space, but smaller individual lot requirement.
Right, exactly.
What's the minimum on a cluster? What's the minimum lot size for a cluster?
Thirty percent right now, right?
You mean lot size or green space?
Lot size.
Your lot size is you have to, you, you can't do any more in a cluster than you can do in a traditional. So whatever your traditional lot size, if your parcel would only allow you to build ten conventional lots, break ten conventional lots based on your dimensional requirements, then you can only do ten in a cluster.
Lots can be pretty small.
Yeah, the lots can be tiny at that point. It just becomes.
It's just for infrastructure costs and stuff like that. Everything's closer together, so like, instead of building massive amounts of roads, massive amounts of piping and stuff like that, it's all condensed into a local area.
So it's based on the overall size of the project, not necessarily, it has to be like point nine acres.
No.
No, no, you still need to meet the.
Your conventional, yeah. So your conventional, your conventional layout, if you were not doing cluster, has to meet all those same dimensional requirements. So if you change that, that would change all of that as well.
Yeah. Okay. So moving on, the next change was in six point, three point one residential gross, growth limitation provisions. So we're striking out A and B.
James, you're gonna get.
Part of that proposal would be to, um, replace it. This is, this is proposed by Cyrus as well. He's, he, he brought in a, uh, growth limitation ordinance from North Berwick. And the proposal is to replace it with, um, a, a thirty-three dwelling unit cap, which would be the average of the past ten years, a plus five percent, five percent of the average of the past ten years. And that is the lowest we can go by state law. So a hat, thirty-three would be, if we wanted to put in a growth cap, thirty-three would be the lowest cap that could be put in.
So. All right, so with the growth cap, I think that we're trying to cap it in certain areas. Cause like downtown, R one zone, we shouldn't be capping it. We should be trying to promote it. Cause that's where everyone wants the growth is, in the downtown area. I, maybe we should try and think of trying to cap it in rural, more rural areas and not just as in general.
Yeah, if you took this, kinda the same approach, if you took the average of the past ten years and added five percent in like R three, it's more like fourteen or fifteen.
Okay.
So you put the, the limit at R three and for protection, so basically R, R three.
I mean, R three is huge in Berwick.
And that, and, there's a major correlation between R three growth and the town growth. I mean, R three is the driver of growth, so that's, I can provide that to the board, some of that data.
Okay, cause we've had this conversation about, you know, limiting growth and, because there's a conception that, you know, the town is growing at an unsustainable rate, but all the data proves that that's not true. So why would we be trying to limit growth?
One of the reasons is just limiting, like, kinda regulating the spikes to kinda smooth out some of the, the most costly things to the town are spikes, cause you have to increase classroom sizes so you can spread it out a little bit.
The last major spike was in the eighties. That's the population. I mean, we went from eighteen hundred to three hundred and fifty-eight in the nineties. And then now in twenty teens, we're at seven forty-five. I mean, this is in thousands, so we're at like seventy-five hundred range. I mean, I kinda agree with Les at that point. I mean, why, I understand the thought of this is we're trying to limit the growth in the R three, cause we're trying to protect farmland. But how are we gonna protect farmland fairly? Because at the same time, it's like what Les just said about even the lot sizes. How are we trying to devalue someone else's property by limiting what they can do on it?
Can I derail the choo-choo train? So listen, I have a question for James because I have one issue with six point three point one. Is this looking like it will, whatever is gonna replace this is going to replace it in time for the vote? Or if not, can we look at adding that, uh, that correction that we need to based on what happened out on Wentworth?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That just, it goes by like a technicality about, just clarifying.
I would like to just clarify it in there. So my issue with six point three point one is when you read this and we actually had to go to the attorney for this because what happened is there was a subdivision that was, um, approved through the planning board and it was just lots. And the lots were sold for intent to build. Now, it was, the, the subdivision itself was split in two zones. The fourth building permit I received would have been under six point three point one. If you read it with a certain slant, absolutely not approvable. However, the person that purchased that lot had already sold their home, had a handicapped partner, was forced to live in an unsafe, unhandicapped accessible place. I reached out to the attorney because I was like, what, what the hell are we gonna do here? And because where the already approved permits fell into different zones, if you read this with the other slant, then you can have three permits per year, per subdivision, per zone. So we just wanna clarify, I want to clarify that so that it is on the books and above board that if this does not get replaced, I would like to see that clearly drawn out as the attorney says that it can be. So I would like to put that little bug into your ear, if this does not get replaced before the voters because I don't like anybody having any reason to question if what I'm doing is what is legal and right by the residents.
I, I, I think I would like to see what would, what we would. I, I think I would like to see what would, what we would be replacing this with before we strike anything out.
Okay, so.
I mean, that, that just makes sense.
Did the attorney have any recommended language for, for what would pass legal muster? Because we could speculate all day, but it still has to pass.
No, he did not, but whatever we write up, again, just a reminder for the whole board, you guys write things up, they go to the select board, and then they go to the attorney. So anything that's not worded right, he knows what my intent is with that because obviously he and I had several long conversations about this. If I word it wrong when I present it to you, he'll fix it.
Okay.
He'll make it legal because he knows what I, what I'm trying to do. And I'm just, it was a situation where I was glad to see that the, that the vagueness played out in the favor of the resident who was, in my opinion, slighted and put in a very terrible position.
Okay.
What you're talking about, replacements, already right there, next page, if you turn one more mic, it's right there.
Oh, okay.
Replace with growth ordinance proposal. There's three pages of, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm saying if that's not, if that replace, if this whole section doesn't get replaced for, with the growth ordinance proposal, if that doesn't happen in time for the set to go to the voters, then I would like the addition of that clause to this existing to be placed. I'm sorry, I'm clear as much.
Which allows, which allows the building of three houses per zone.
Per zone, per subdivision, just to, just to make sure that nobody questions that what we're doing is above board.
With the growth.
And for, and for you guys too.
But would you wanna, let me, I just thought of something. Would you wanna have the percent, like what percent of that lot is in which zone, right? If it's only a very small percentage of the parcel is.
I'll write the verbiage up for that. What I based it on for this?
Isn't, isn't, as a zone, the, the zone that is the majority of the lot is that lot zone? So if you.
Yes and no, because under code, under code, like your setbacks, if you are partially in R2 and partially in R3 and you build that house in the R2 section, those are your setbacks. If you build it in the R3 section, those are your setbacks.
Right.
One of these lots is split pretty much 50/50.
Uh huh, okay.
So it's, I, it might actually even be worth putting it, let me.
I'm just pretty sure that it's in the land use ordinance, that if, if it's the majority of one, it's classified under that. But I understand what you're saying, like when you're building setbacks.
We should add a, we should add something for those 50/50 lots that, in the event that if it's 50/50.
Yeah, pick one.
We go, I mean, if your lot is divided, why would you not go with the more lenient to benefit the landlord?
Depends on.
Well, it depends on what you plan on doing with it, because.
And it depends on what the ordinance says.
If it's for agriculture use, you can have more animals in R3 than you can in R2. Like density wise, and that, I mean, that's the only way I see it, is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we get something in there to clarify that it's
Okay.
based on the zones, because I don't want people thinking that I am, not just, not just the residents, I don't want the board thinking that I am taking what you guys are saying and then just throwing it out the window. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Looking at this growth management permit thing, we don't set the pricing. This is saying 250, 200, whatever. We don't set the pricing. We just recommend a price and then the selectmen vote on that. Is that gonna be enough, or is that too much, or? That's on page two of three on that.
Is this, this is a copy from North Berwick? Is this what this is?
Don't look at me, I had nothing to do with this one. I backed right off 6.3.1.
I'm not a fan of North Berwick's growth management permit process.
Okay.
Cause again, it's, this is what I was talking about, and it's limiting the amount of permits.
Right, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do that.
They actually limit multifamily permits to six per year.
Oh wow.
Six growth permits per year, so it's, it's really counterproductive. That's why North Berwick is actually called No Berwick.
Oh, can I back you guys up for half a second?
Yeah.
I noticed they strike out on 6.3.1.1 for determining number of permits to be issued if this parcel is split or conveyed into two parcels. It looks like they struck out three years prior.
They went to five, yeah. I was actually gonna bring that up too.
I don't know who did this, this, all this stuff.
I, I'm against, I'm against changing that.
Right, and that's what, so that stuff that was struck, oh.
It was just, it was just that number was changed.
We wanted to replace it with this. They wanted to replace it with this.
I'm assuming that the, like I said.
They're trying to limit the growth.
Well, I'm not sure who did this, but I'm assuming, based on my experience with subdivision law, that they went from three to five because five years is lot split for subdivision law. So they're probably trying to bring whoever, who did this? Cyrus, okay. Like how I say that so accusatory, who did this? Sorry, James. I'm not hangry, I'm just getting sleepy. So that's what I'm assuming is, but I just, I have no opinion either way. I just wanted to make sure we didn't skip something that Terry was gonna ask me if we missed later, cause I don't want to have to answer her either.
Are we gonna leave that at three, or what?
Was that what the consensus is?
I've heard the rumors about you.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, leave it at three.
Leave it at three.
Let's hold off, because reading subdivision growth permit restrictions, this is part of that. The total number of growth management permits issued for apartments and subdivisions located in any zoning district shall not exceed 75% of the total number of growth management permits being issued in a single fiscal year as determined pursuant to section 6.3.4. If the number of growth management permits issued for non-subdivision lots on a first-come, first-served basis exceeds 45% of the total number of growth management permits being issued in a fiscal, single fiscal year, then the maximum number of growth management permits allocated for apartments and subdivisions, i.e. 75% of the total number for the fiscal year, shall be reduced accordingly to accommodate a proportionally greater number of non-subdivision allocated lots. In no instance shall the total number of growth management permits issued within a fiscal year exceed the number established by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, those are certainly all words.
That is, if anything, I would want to simplify what we have, instead of making, like we're, we're taking a less than a page thing and turning it into a three-page thing on limiting growth. Which like Les said, we're not, we shouldn't be limiting growth when Maine says that there is a housing crisis. We don't have enough homes for everyone, and it's not just us, our town, it's the whole state.
And there's no doubt to say that we're growing at an unhealthy rate.
Right, there is no spike yet. I mean, if there was a big spike and maybe.
I don't think, you know, quite, quite frankly, I think that the economy is cooling off, the housing market is cooling off. I think that the, the housing market itself is gonna correct or prevent any spike.
Yeah. So would consensus be that we're just gonna table this for later?
I would think so.
Do we have any, do, do we have any mechanism for growth management though? In, in the event, you know, the data changes, is there any mechanism in place?
Well, we just come back to it and say, hey.
Yeah, twice a year, right?
Yeah.
Twice a year, we have a mechanism to put it before the voters.
And our, so our current mechanism is the 6.3.1 that was originally struck out.
Right.
That's our current one.
Right, the A, the C, and D.
Yep.
So let's just.
Those are, that's the, that's the original mechanism.
So 20 permits in a given subdivision. The one that struck, struck out, residential growth limit provisions?
That's for R2.
Yeah, that's with public sewer and water.
Yeah, in town, in town it's, public utilities is 20, and well and septic is three.
Yeah. So are we in consensus that we're gonna hold off on this?
Yes.
I think we need to.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So this is getting tabled?
Yeah.
When do you want us to throw this back in here?
Um, we can keep talking about it every, any meeting that.
Give you guys a chance to review it.
Yeah.
I can show you an R3, just so you can see what it looks like.
Yeah, speak up on the mic, sorry.
Wow.
Counseling the boss.
Talk about the boss, you guys.
That's why he's the chair.
I have no authority here. Yeah, no, I just, I can show you what an R3 cap looks like, just, just so you have your information on that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if, if the average is 14 to 15, houses are built a year in R3, I mean, or subdivisions are, you know, that's still not that much. If it was like 1,000 or 500, then we're talking serious numbers here, and then that's a huge concern.
We haven't even issued that many permits for the whole town, so.
Right, so.
Well, I think that, I think that, you know, limiting wherever the, basically where there's no water and sewer, three permits a year is going to.
It slows them down a lot.
It's gonna slow them down, yeah, because, because, you know, from, from a development standpoint, you know, you gotta buy the land, you gotta get it through engineering, get it through the planning board. You know, there's a huge outlay of money upfront to sell three lots.
At a time, yeah.
At a time. So that, that in and of itself is gonna slow the growth
Yeah.
in those areas for sure.
Yep. Alright, so this one is Brendan and Julia Cooney. Some things are, are not really related to what the planning board. It's like, one's just a comment about the playground. They're happy that the playground's finally getting finished. Ample parking and traffic flow planning, project construction. They're talking about the edge at that point. I mean, the, basically, I know with the edge, the traffic studies aren't gonna happen until it's all built. That's, they did the parking stuff and they have enough spots. And then once, if there is a higher demand and flow, then that's when all the traffic studies are gonna get done. Is that correct, James?
We, we've done a traffic study. We know that like there's a backup for the light.
Yeah.
We have some ideas that could help alleviate, but the, like the congestion at our intersections, our intersections actually work fairly well. But yeah, I mean, most of our intersections where we, they are, they are required to do pedestrian improvements. That's part of their requirement through the DOT. They have to do some significant pedestrian. But overall, our, their intersections have been studied that they will work even with the added traffic. It's just the, obviously the traffic light is an issue.
Yeah.
There's things that we can do to improve it, but kind of like we added a, like a right green arrow.
Yeah.
That's one way that could help alleviate some of that congestion, but.
Well, the, and the traffic going across the bridge from Summersworth, how do you fix that?
I think the bulk of this.
Tunnel.
Double decker bridge.
I, I think, I think a lot of this stuff is town manager and our public work, so I'm going to very unceremoniously say, hey, James, do you wanna check this out?
I mean, what, another, another thing I was looking at is limiting further marijuana dispensaries. I mean, the town just voted on removing the cap, so I mean, it's kind of contradictory to what the, the town just voted on.
I think that it speaks to the fact that this is like a well-thought-out thing from a citizen's point of view.
Yes.
Right, and a little bit like emotional, like, don't we have enough?
Yeah.
I get that, 100%. I validate that.
Yeah.
But it all comes back to what meets the land use ordinances. And change comes from changing the land use ordinances.
Right.
So that's where I'd like the public to understand, yes, your opinion is important, but the change takes place.
You gotta look at the land use ordinance.
Correct.
And then see what.
How it applies.
Yes, what needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing, though? I do think that when we put out an invitation for ideas and thoughts and opinions, that we're going to get a pretty wide array.
Oh yeah, and they need to be heard. I mean, we need to see them. Um, it's, it's, we just need to see what is adjustable and what's just an opinion of.
What's actionable, what's not.
Right.
Right, but it's, it's great that people are actually.
Yes, oh yeah, it's great to get feedback.
Taking the time to write this.
And we, and we've made sure that you guys were provided, well, Terry made sure you guys were provided with copies of everything, but she and I had discussed it. And even though some of the things that came in were obviously not planning board purview, we don't want to discourage anybody from sending anything in because she and I do not mind being the clearinghouse to get the things that are perhaps public works related to them or town manager related to him. We want to hear from people regardless of who we have to direct it to.
Right.
That's very important. I'm glad Terry brought that up.
Thank you. Alright, so moving on, that, I mean, that's a pretty good view of the land use ordinance amendments. Moving forward, new business, review of planning board policies and procedures. So I messaged James a couple of weeks ago asking for a copy of this, and then I figured that we could go through this. There is, there's a few things that we need to adjust, like with, number one, the Berwick Planning Board shall consist of five regular and two alternate members. The town's already voted that we're just seven regular members. So changing it of five regular and two alternates just to seven regular members. That would be one of the things.
That takes care of a bunch of the next few ones.
There's, yeah, there's a couple. It's like the number four with the quorum. It changes the quorum from three to four.
There's also a cross out on two then.
Yes, yeah.
Alternates for one year, there are no alternates.
Right, yeah, alternates would be stricken out. We would not be voting on this today, it would be the next meeting. We basically would discuss these today, and then the next meeting we'd be voting on this stuff. But this is just to kind of tighten up.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
On number four, what was the change on number four?
Um, the quorum for a regular or special meeting shall be established when four members are in attendance. And then it'd be stricken out that alternate members may be used to establish the quorum when so authorized by the chairman.
Uh, backup, number three, the secretary may be regular or alternate member.
Yeah, that's also, so I'll just kind of go through them, I guess. So number two is, regular members shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for staggered three-year terms.
Period.
All members shall be sworn, as required by law, appointees must be legal residents of the town of Berwick when appointed and while serving. When there is a permanent vacancy, the board chairman is to notify the municipal officers who must, within 60 days of its occurrence, appoint a person to serve for the unexpired term. Number three, officers of the planning board shall be chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. The chairman and vice chairman shall be regular members of the board and shall be elected for one-year terms at the first meeting in January.
Can we eliminate the secretary job?
No.
Nice try, though.
So, we are, we'd have to bunch, it would be the chairman, vice chairman, and secretary.
And then you could take out shall be regular members of the board because they are.
It would just be, they would, they shall be elected for one-year terms at the first meeting in January. And then all the alternate member stuff would be stricken out. And then it, also, the planning office secretary shall serve as clerk to the board. I mean, there isn't really any clerical things.
That's Terry.
Um, excuse you. Who do you think is editing these? There is two clerical stuff.
Well, I'm saying for, yeah, for you guys there is, I'm saying for the board.
Yeah.
We don't have.
But that's why we serve as a clerk.
Do we need that?
Well, this says the planning office secretary. It doesn't say the planning board secretary.
Yeah.
I mean, we could strike out secretary and just say the planning office, if that makes more sense.
Sure.
I like that.
Okay. Um, no, number four, no official business may be conducted without a quorum present. A quorum for a regular or special meeting shall be established when four members are in attendance. We're striking out alternate members, so then it goes to if any member has or has been declared by the chairman to have a conflict of interest, said member shall not be counted in establishing a quorum for that case. to have a conflict of interest, said member shall not be counted in establishing a quorum for that case. If a member has not attended all meetings, when the application has been considered to include public hearing, if any, and has not fully familiarized him herself with the records of meetings not attended, that member shall not be counted in establishing a quorum.
Should that be and/or? Because if you're not present for a meeting, but you review the material and familiarize yourself, you can still be a voting member, is my understanding.
Right, that's what it says, if any, and has not fully.
And/or, it should be.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Because it's, it's saying, that is saying hard, you have to have been at the meeting and you have to have reviewed all the things. I think it should be an and/or, so, it gives you the, the latitude, if you missed a meeting, but you caught up on all the paperwork, you could still be a voting member.
Yeah.
And I think that's reasonable, if everybody agrees.
I think so, right after if any, and slash or has not fully.
Oh, 'cause how I understand it right now is if you have fully familiarized yourself with the records of the meeting, not attended.
Yeah, I think it makes sense the way it's written.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
If a member has not attended all meetings.
When the application has been considered to include public hearings, if any, and has not, this is just saying if you haven't fully familiarized with yourself, you cannot.
I got you, okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you for helping us, little kid.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
So, just do your homework.
If you do your homework, you get to vote, otherwise, keep it to yourself.
Yeah, and all you have to do is just state that you've, you know, either talked to me or talked with Irish or Terry and say that I wasn't at the meeting, but
I reviewed.
I have watched the, that last meeting, and I'm up to date with everything, that's, that's all that has to be said. In the event a quorum is not present, the board members are authorized to request that the chairman reschedule the meeting to another date and to adjourn the meeting. If the date is other than a regular meeting date, the secretary is responsible for providing adequate notice to the board members, municipal officials, and the general public.
Should that be changed to the clerk?
Clerk, yes.
The clerk.
The clerk is responsible, not the secretary, 'cause we love you, Paul, but.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm the clerk?
She's not a clerk, is she?
Yes.
Yes, because the planning office shall serve as clerk to the board.
Okay, okay, alright, okay.
So, we need to change that.
To the clerk, okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks for explaining that to the slow kid, Phil.
We're sharing the brain over there.
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, you're doing what we do.
She has one cell, I have one cell, and we kinda like bash them together and make one.
Who was the shortest-serving secretary in history?
Alright. She's itching to get off that.
So, number five, all matters other than final votes, or where the chair requests a call of roll, shall be decided by a show of hands. A simple majority of the members voting shall be sufficient for any motion properly seconded to pass. When a motion results in a tie, vote it fails. That should be alright. Um, number six, regular meetings shall be held on the first and third Tuesdays, Thursday, sorry, for each month unless such day is a holiday. If such is the case, the meeting scheduled for that day will be canceled. Oh, excuse me, no meeting will be held during the first week of July, or the third week of this, in December, unless the board, by a majority vote, determines that such a meeting shall be held. Number seven, special meetings may be called by the chairman, or in his or her absence by the vice chairman, or by a majority vote of the planning board. Number eight, no regular, cross out alternate, member shall be allowed to participate or to vote in any discussion or deliberation of the board when that member has declared, or the board has determined that the member has a conflict of interest in the case under discussion. Conflict of interest means direct or indirect pecuniary interest, which includes pecuniary benefit to any member of the person's immediate family, to his employer, or to the employer of any member of the person's immediate family. It also includes a situation where the board member, by reason of interest, is placed in a situation of temptation to serve the member's own personal interest instead of the public's interest. Any question of whether a member must be disqualified from voting, voting on a particular matter must be decided by a majority vote of the members present, except the member who has, who is being challenged.
So, I have two things to say about that. One is just a kind of a grammatical thing, is towards the end, when it says, um, of whether a member must be disqualified from voting on a particular matter, if you're recusing, you're recusing from discussing also, so it's not just the vote, it's about, like, if, if we think somebody shouldn't.
Right.
Should be recused.
Right.
So, it should say whether a member must be recused, and that covers discussion and voting, as opposed to here, it's just saying only from voting, disqualified from voting. Does that make sense? Like, any question of whether a member must be disqualified from voting on a particular matter, well, you can't have discussion and then say you can't vote, right? A recusal is you can't do either.
I think recusal's a separate matter.
Yes.
I think this is, in the event, like, something came before the board, and it was, if there was discovery that led, everybody up here, for the most part, is a gentleman and will recuse themselves.
I would think is voluntary, while if you're voted as a conflict of interest, you're forced into it.
You know, that's the diff, the difference.
So, it kinda comes up after the fact, as opposed to.
I think a good example, Rick, would have been if you did not recuse yourself on the Woodlands.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the board members could have voted to recuse you.
Yeah.
If you did not recuse yourself.
And I think the intent is that that discussion would happen prior to any discussion about the actual project.
Right.
Right, no, yeah, you would think.
Yeah.
But like you said, though, in, in discovery, it might come out.
Right, yeah.
You know, that, oh, shoot, I'm related to the engineer's daughter's friend or whatever.
And a reasonable person would recuse themselves.
Correct.
Yeah, it's to keep unreasonable people reasonable, I think, is the.
So, then the other thing was, and, and I don't wanna get into the, the weeds on this, but, um, in my situation before, I was recused from discussion and voting, but there was a procedural problem that the board did not follow. And I was not allowed to say, hey, wait, stop, timeout, we can't do it that way. I wonder, should there be an opportunity for a recused member to be able to at least call a point of order for a procedural issue?
I think any member of the community can do that, if you go up to speak publicly, unless I'm mistaken. Like, you can, you can raise that.
The public can't, but if a majority vote of the planning board can.
But I wasn't allowed to speak.
The chair can say no, and if other people of the board vote it out, it can get changed. But if the chair says no, it's, it's a no. Or if the chair says yes, it's a yes.
So, would I ask permission if I could say something in that situation?
Yes.
And you would say yes or no?
Yep.
And if you said no?
And other people in the board wanted to hear what you had to say.
They could vote majority.
They could veto that, yep.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
And we will.
So, I guess it just needs to be clear that a recused member can ask permission to speak under certain situations.
But, yes, not, not on the procedure, but not on the question.
Well, I guess it would be up to the chair to decide whether they could speak on whatever they're asking for.
Right.
Can I ask one question, Rick? Um, are you referring to the meeting, um, I believe there was a public hearing portion, I believe you recused yourself. There was a public hearing, but then a lot of things were talked about and discussed, the public hearing was then closed. More things were discussed, and you had asked to, at that point, make a statement.
My statement was going to be procedural. In other words, and, and we could go back, I don't want to, but basically, we were given a plan, we voted to approve the plan without getting copies of the plan, then we took that back the next meeting, then we did the exact same thing the next meeting, when we shouldn't have again, but we let it go through, and we never went back and talked about it again. So, that second time, we did the exact same thing, I wanted to say, we can't do this again, but I wasn't allowed to speak. I'm just wanting to make sure that there is a clear, written policy that says somebody in recusal can ask permission for input, and then either be told no and vetoed or not.
In addition to the public hearing portion, which you are allowed as a recused.
In that case, I could.
Yeah, as, as a member of the public, you have the right to speak in a public.
Yeah, but that was closed.
And after the public hearing.
So, maybe after the public hearing, clarify it.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's what you're referring to?
Yes, I think.
Once the public hearing is closed.
Correct, yes, 'cause I had every opportunity as a public person.
Right.
But that, it didn't come up until it was time to vote.
Right, that makes sense. Yep, makes you know.
What is the, so, we don't have anything addressing that.
No.
Right now.
No.
So, it would need to be a whole new paragraph.
Yeah. How about, let's finish going through this and then go, circle back to that.
Slide it in at nine or 10, because you can scratch.
I can't, I can't move past the spelling error here.
We're gonna fix.
Yeah, we, we got the spelling errors, there's two we found so far, matter.
Matter.
And vice chairman is.
Alright, now I can move on.
Okay.
So, number nine.
Why, you don't, you don't wanna have mayor from cars over here?
Number nine does not apply anymore, so that gets stricken out.
Number nine's completely short.
Well, I guess we know where we're putting the new.
Yeah, the new one will be number nine.
And number 10.
Yeah, and number 10 is also.
Scratchy bread.
Because that, that talks about alternate.
Uh, we could cross alternate members out of eleven.
Out of eleven, including alternate members.
Yeah, so, number eleven is, any member may make a, a.
A second motion.
Make a second motion.
Singular.
And make and second motions.
Yes, that's right.
So, you can make it and second, and then strike out including alternate members who have been authorized to vote by the chairman.
Yes.
And then, with, notwithstanding that the chairman presides over the meetings of the board, he, she may make and second motions and participate in the board's deliberations as may the other officers of the board.
And actually, number 12 covers Rick's issue.
Okay, so, number 12, if anyone in attendance at a board meeting wishes to address the boards, they may do so with a permission from and at the discretion of the chairman of, or a vote of majority of the members present. The chairman may define the scope of discussion and may decide when the speaker has stepped out of order or otherwise moved beyond the defined parameters of the meeting. Speakers will be allotted five minutes to speak and will not continue past the prescribed timeframe. At the discretion of the chairman, an additional three minutes of time may be added to the original five minutes if deemed necessary. No one will discuss any pending litigation. Under no circumstances shall anyone other than board members be allowed to question or address anyone appearing before the board without permission of a majority of the board members present, and all such inquiries, inquiries shall be made through the chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
At the beginning, the first sentence says, they may do so with permission from and at the direction of the chairman. Do you want that to be discretion, because it does say discretion.
You, you said discretion, and it says direction.
Okay.
But, but two sentences later, it does say at the discretion.
Right.
So, do you want that, is that, does the board wish that to say at the direction, or at the discretion?
I think the way it's worded is fine.
Yeah, I think it's.
We'll just leave it the way it is, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that's, they're saying two things there.
Yeah, well, I just.
They're saying they may do so with permission and at the direction of the chairman, so.
I know, but where he said discretion, I wanted to make sure that he wasn't wanting garbage change, so.
How that's, how I am interpreting that is, they would be directing their questions and concerns to me.
I, I understand.
Or the chair, you know.
I understand what it is, but I didn't know if you wanted to change that word, because you said something different, which obviously changes the tone of the whole thing, so, needed to know.
And this looks like.
Permission is discretion.
Right, and that's for the three minutes additional.
Webster, Webster, is that you? Webster's dictionary?
Well, it's two things, it's saying that, that, you know, they may do so with the permission from and at the direction of the chairman.
But he said something different than what was there, so I was clear.
He inadvertently said discretion instead.
But I wanted to clarify.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, you inadvertently said something different, but I needed to clarify for us, because
Yes.
if you wanted that's different than what you.
Okay, my bad.
No, it's, it's not a.
Number 12 is, is all about a board member, correct?
Yes.
A board member.
So, it looks like.
No. No, it's anybody that wants.
If anyone in attendance at a boarding, at a board meeting.
That would encompass board members, I would.
Yes, and when you recuse yourself, you become a member of the public, and you are a person in attendance. So, that would be where you would get your.
Other three, at the discretion.
That would be when you could speak up with the, the permission.
But it does not say at a pub, at the public hearing portion or anything like that, so, it seems to me like you can ask for that permission at any point.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Yeah.
And it goes like you did today.
Okay, so.
That's right.
So, then this would be talking about what, what you were just.
I think so.
Okay, okay. Alright, so, next.
We all agree on the.
Thirteen, if any board member misses forty percent of the regular planning board meetings in a six-month period, the planning board shall ask the board of selectmen to declare a de facto vacancy and to appoint a replacement.
That's how you get replaced. How about the planning board may ask? I mean, if there's a reason for it, and we still have six members who are, um, here most of the time.
Well, this, this is.
Could be a he, a health issue or something.
Right, um. I don't know, 'cause shall has teeth, may does not, um, it's all a relative, 'cause this is in a six-month period, so, six months, we have eleven meetings. So, forty percent of that is you basically have to miss, like, five meetings in a six-month period.
Where are you really contributing at that point?
Right, I mean, you'd have to catch up a lot, and if, I mean, if you caught up, so.
Yeah.
Should we, should we just add a clause that says that if you're up to date?
Well, I think by changing it to may, it kinda does that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. But, I think hav, having a clause in there that says, 'cause like, if you just miss five meetings in a row and you don't get yourself up to date, you're gonna get kicked out.
But that, that gives you the permission to ask that permission.
Okay, yeah.
It doesn't tie your hands.
But then again, you also have.
So, case by case, like, if somebody had an extended illness.
Yeah, you don't have to ask.
Like, if somebody was out for an extended illness, you're like, oh, okay, well, that's reasonable, but if somebody's just duffing off the meetings.
Right.
Yeah, can them.
Right, right. It also makes it, uh, we would have to keep track of attendance, and it would be, it would be mandatory to kick someone off the board.
Right.
Yes.
Well, how it's written now, that's how it is.
That's exactly right.
It's supposed to be a mandatory thing.
Yes.
Which there is no vote to it.
Right, that's right.
This is, if you miss forty percent of the regular meetings in a six-month period.
Right.
You shall.
Right.
Declare a de facto vacancy.
Has anyone missed forty percent?
One a month.
Oh, no, let me think.
Well, I mean, if you miss it and you don't publicly state that you're up to date, I mean, you can't vote on it.
That's how you get rid of it, right? You miss it, but you watch the meeting.
Right.
Right. You didn't really miss it.
That's, so, perhaps, if you, if, if some of you want to keep shall instead of may, you could put a second line in there that says, uh, the public, public acknowledgement of having previous, having watched the missed meeting shall negate the, shall negate the absence.
We're all reasonable people.
Well, I think the word may kinda takes care of.
Well, that's what I think without adding anything.
At their discretion, they could.
But actually, actually. Whose discretion is it at? Because all, if we're, if we say may, then we're adding it to a vote, or we're making it a chair discretion?
It's your discretion. You know what?
I'd rather.
Maybe we ought to leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Because you can say, uh, just as we could have tonight, I'll do it on Zoom. So, you can be away and still get.
I'm just worried about the instance of.
Instead of just watching it on.
So, you gotta define what misses a meeting is. So you got to define what misses a meeting is.
So I guess I'm just, my only concern would be the event of a medical emergency with a board member or a spouse possibly that would cause them to miss.
That'd be a long medical emergency.
It would, it would, but.
It's happened in the past.
Yeah, but it has, and what happened is, they got voted out or declared de facto, and someone else took their spot, and then after that said period of time, like, that, because it's just.
When there was an opening, they got back.
Right, right.
Okay, so leave it the way it is?
Yeah, okay.
It's reasonable.
Okay, so number 14, these policies and procedures may be changed or amended by a majority vote of board members present at a regular meeting after the proposed changes have been read at one previous regular meeting. So that's why we're not voting on it today. Fifteen, the invalidity of any section or provision of these bylaws do not invalidate any other section or provision of these bylaws, that's.
That is enough.
That's, that's legalese.
Yeah, and then 16 is the site walks. The site walk is for informational purposes only. It is our opportunity to review the actual site to get a feel for the project. The chairman of the board conducts the site walk. If the chairman is not available, the vice chair will conduct the site walk. Please assist in keeping the site walk group together. Anyone asking questions should be encouraged to save them for the public hearing phase. Hearings are televised, which ensures questions, no, ensures that it will be in the public record. It is imperative that multiple conversations between board members and the public do not take place. Other board members present at the walk should refrain from taking questions from the public or providing answers, but instead direct them to the chairman. All board members shall remain together during the site walk. At no time shall a member walk away from the group to engage in private conversation. Which that we just added.
So the last part about at no time shall a member walk away, when we had a situation where a butter didn't have, I'm sorry, I hit the mic, didn't have a physical capability of joining, a member walked over, talked to them.
Yep, how, we talked about that before, and what needs to happen is, it needs to be directed toward the chair, and the chair has the discretion to go over there and discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have to say that today I was primarily with the group, but at one point I found myself standing next to the fire chief and had a conversation with him today, so I probably shouldn't have done that.
It's not a perfect type of.
So you're right, we're social people, we're gonna talk, right? But I did notice that as the gentleman who was speaking, Dennis, I looked around, and there were times when two or three or four of us were nearby, and two or three or four of us were not, and then we didn't all catch everything he said, because A, he wasn't necessarily talking loudly, and B, we weren't grouped together as a board, we were spread out amongst the population. And I think that we should try, as a board, to be a group as a board in listening to the applicant closely, so that we can avoid coming here and going, well, I didn't.
I didn't hear that, did you hear that?
Yeah, you know, and I'm not picking on Paul.
No.
I'm really not.
No, hey, I confess, I confess. I'm not.
Yeah, I wouldn't agree with that, too.
All right.
I have just one hint, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I didn't know on, when we had the session with the town attorney, and he had, when we talk about conflict of interest and going back to paragraph number eight, and he had mentioned that if a member does have, if there's any appearance of a conflict of interest, that that member should make a statement at that point and say, yes, the applicant is my brother-in-law and plows my snow, but I do feel I can be impartial in hearing this application, and so he did mention that, and I didn't know if he wanted to incorporate anything like that into this paragraph.
I think that's important, I think that the person has an opportunity to say, it looks like it's a conflict of interest, but here's why not. I think that you're correct, my opinion is that.
Maybe a self-disclosure clause.
Well, I think that also would go into the voting of it, too.
Yes.
As long as they're allowed to discuss their part.
Right, because I mean, if someone brings that up, saying, you know, it looks like this, but I can stay impartial, and I will follow the land use ordinance, and then we could vote as a board to say whether you are or not a conflict of interest.
That's right.
Yeah.
So it's really just adding a sentence to this paragraph, I believe, or two.
Yes, like self-disclosure, like you said.
Well, no, because it's.
Are you saying?
No regular member shall be allowed to participate or to vote in any discussion or deliberation of the board when that member has declared or the board has determined that the member has a conflict of interest.
So during that determination is when they could talk.
Right, that's when we would determine it, and that's when we could vote. I mean, if you're gonna voluntarily recuse yourself, that's one thing, but if you bring it up and we discuss it, then we're already.
I think Terry's at the spot right before that last sentence you were saying, because she's saying, should there be something in there stating that you should bring it up?
Ah.
Yeah.
Yes, Terry, is that where you're going with that?
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
Well, that's what you said, you said self-disclosure statement, just, yeah, just a self-disclosure statement, if you think that there could be a perceived, self-disclosure of a perceived conflict of interest shall be discussed and voted on by the board. I think that's an ethics issue.
Yeah, it really is, yeah.
So we might reword that, though, but that's.
I think that's good foundation to start.
Nice. All right, so that was a review of that. Second public comment. No one on Zoom? Hannah, do you have public comment?
Hannah? We all looked over, I should return back to.
We're still waiting for the appearance of the cat.
She's at her office.
Oh, that's right, that's right, no cat at the office.
We know you're not asleep now.
Yeah, she's listening. Informational items.
So I have one, and I don't want to get into it, because we've been here a little bit tonight for very long, but it basically involves Article 10 of the subdivision regulations, which is inspections and enforcement of approved final plans. And basically, my question was, and I went into the town hall and talked to Terry about this the other day, what do we do after a plan leaves here in terms, not necessarily what we do, what is the procedure when a plan leaves here finalized in terms of making sure the developer's doing what they say we asked them to do? So Article 10 talks about that. My question is, and I have not even spoken to Irish about this at all, so I don't even know the answer.
Hi.
Is, are all of these steps being followed to check on things? And then going back, one step back to Section 8 in subdivision regulations, letter O in 8.2, it says, "A list of construction items with cost estimates that will be completed by the applicant prior to the sale of lots and evidence that the applicant has financial commitments or resources to cover these costs." This is a document that the developer will give to the planning board and code enforcement and the town, whatever, saying, "These construction items that cost this much are going to be done before I sell a lot." Is that list exist in any of our subdivisions that we do, and is it enforced if it is? And my question is, because at Woodland Pond, they are currently in the beginning stages of the project, and two lots are for sale.
We can't discuss.
Okay, I know of a development where they're currently in the process of working on it, and there are two lots for sale.
So, quick answer to your questions. We receive the engineer reports, and any reports that I need to have provided from an actual developer, you can just turn your head to the left and ask him how it went down with me trying to get the information that I needed for MS4, because he came into the office and I said, oh, by the way, while you're here, I need you to do this. So, yes, they do get followed up on.
Okay.
Okay, and as far as that, if any, if you guys ever see anything, as far as the, what they have to do, their lists of what they have to do and providing those lists, that's how we determine what their bond is gonna be.
Yes, they do.
So they have to provide that, because they have to provide that, so they can post their bonds, or their security bonds, that allow us to allow them to even start.
Okay.
Okay?
Performance and security bonds.
So we get those, we get that stuff. So it's a short, quick answer.
Perfect.
We do have one other informational item. So y'all wanted to know information about the dam water department, but nobody answered. Two people answered Terry's email.
Hey, I answered.
One, one answered.
Two.
Two answered Terry's email. Do y'all want to go on a field trip to the water department, find out how it works?
Yes.
We don't have any snacks.
I'll make some.
No snacks involved.
I made snacks for everybody for Christmas, and most y'all didn't show up to get them, so.
I ate mine.
You did, you did.
Can we schedule that?
What's that, Hannah?
Are there any leftovers?
You couldn't come get yours either, it was Smores Park.
Listen, we got it right here for you. We were just waiting for you. You just can't see it, it's under the table.
Actually, I had to throw it away, because it sat in the office for two weeks, and I was like, no, I'm good. So, yes, 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 show of hands, who wants to go?
Yes.
Uh, how does?